All right, I want to thank everyone for their patience as we come out of closed session. I'm going to have us start in just a couple minutes. All right, I'm going to go ahead and move us along, and I think we're ready to call the meeting to order. The time is 7:06 PM, and I'll ask our city clerk to please conduct the roll call.
Mayor Sors.
Present.
Vice Mayor Verganser.
Present.
Councilmembers Gordon.
Present.
I saw councilmember letters you somewhere. Mathulek.
Present.
Palmaris.
Present.
Matias.
Present.
All right, thank you very much, and we will now ask everyone to please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, thank you. That's going to bring us to our report out of closed session. City Attorney Neb, could we have our report out from closed session, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The city council did meet this evening in closed session with regard to the following items. Item A, Conference with Real Property Negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 549-56.8. The property, 800-822-1181 Walnut Avenue. Agency negotiators as listed. The negotiating parties, the City of Vallejo and Mare Island Historic Preservation Foundation. The council actually did not hear that item, and it will be added to a different agenda. Item B, Conference with Real Property Negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 549-56.8. The property, 820-822 Walnut, 970 Nimitz, 1100 Nuris, and 375 G Street Vallejo. Negotiators as listed on the agenda. Negotiating parties, the City of Vallejo and Mare Island Company under negotiation price and terms of payment. The council gave direction with regard to that item. Item C, Conference with Real Property Negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 549-56.8. Properties on North Mare Island as listed by APN. On the agenda, negotiators as listed. Negotiating parties, the City of Vallejo and Mare Island Company under negotiation price and terms of payment. The council gave direction to staff with regard to those items. And Item D, Conference with Legal Counsel. Existing litigation pursuant to California Government Code Section 549-56.9D1. The cases, the Vallejo Police Officers Association versus the City of Vallejo, perp case number as listed on the agenda, and the council provided direction with regard to that item. There is no other action to report at this time.
All right, thank you very much. That's going to bring us to our presentations and commendations, and we have one today, which is our report out of our Vallejo youth delegation, which went to the National League of Cities Congressional Conference in Washington, DC. We're going to invite them up for about a 10-minute presentation, and we have our VCUSD Representative, Ms. Sharita Dilly, who is coming up with the youth, and you all can go ahead whenever you're set up.
Oh, it is tiny, huh? Oh, okay. Hi, everyone, Sharita Dilly, Community Services Manager with the Vallejo City Unified School District. We are so incredibly grateful that we were afforded the opportunity. It's okay, we love babies. Afforded the opportunity to take the trip to the National League of Cities Conference. It was a joint venture between the Vallejo City Unified School District and the City of Vallejo. So with that, what we're going to do is we're going to have the students talk about their experience so that you guys can know, you know, how it went. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Alasia Simmons. I am the Student Trustee for the Board of Education in Vallejo, and I'm also a student at Jesse Bethel High School, a sophomore. During the NLC conference, can we do the next slide? Thank you. During the NLC conference, we were able to network with a lot of youth leaders across the nation, and with the people that we networked with, we were able to have leadership-centered workshops, and with the workshop, we learned a lot that we can bring back to Vallejo, and I'm really excited to bring it back. Ricardo will talk more about those workshops.
Hello, everyone, my name is Ricardo Morales. I am a Student Trustee for the Vallejo School District, and part to what Alasia said, in these workshops, we worked on problem framing, which in this certain area, we focused on how problem framing can be important and how the small issues can fix the big issues in a certain area in the community. And we also, after that, we worked on ideating, which, just creating ideas on how those small issues can become not a problem and make those big problems. And just next to me, we worked on was implementation, which, how we can implement those ideas into the community, and how we can view those, and just have a bigger idea of how we can fix it in a bigger area. And next thing was implementing to Vallejo High School. So in my leadership class, after we came back, I made a slide presentation about problem framing in my leadership class, which went well, and just by doing that, my leadership and advocacy skills went up. Just confidently, I feel better, and publicly speaking, I'm still practicing, which I believe I'm doing good. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Priscilla Williams. I am a senior at Jesse Bethel High School, and there I am Senior Class President, and I'm here to talk about what we got to do in our off time. So when we were at the conference, we got to explore all around downtown DC, and we got to go to museums and monuments. So Arnold, who couldn't be here tonight, really wants to be a paleontologist when he grows up, so we got to go to the National Museum of Natural History, and there we got to see a lot of rare fossils. And we also got to experience the Martin Luther King Memorial, where Zenaya got to do her step routine, which, she's a part of the African-American Parent Network, and there she's on the step team. So it was really cool that we got to kind of represent our heritage and our culture and bring Vallejo to DC. And we also got to go to the Lincoln Memorial a few times, and we went there, we got to see Lincoln's monument and read his Gettysburg Address, which is engraved in the walls, and we got to overlook where Martin Luther King did his "I Have a Dream" speech. It was just really educational and really empowering to see all the history built on the grounds of DC. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Taylor Barden. I'm a senior attending Jesse Bethel High School and a second-year Willie Beacken Scholar. And while on the tour, we also got to attend Howard University. Can you change the slide, please? Thank you. And our tour was led by Willie Beacken Scholar alumni, and it was really nice to get a tour from people who are actually attending the school, especially for me, since that's where I currently plan on attending in the fall. So getting that tour really gave me a lot of clarity in my commitment to Howard, and it was beautiful, so thank you.
Hello, okay. Yes, please. Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Sonia Valdez, soy parte del programa Willie Beackens en mi segundo año y también parte de Ser Latino programa. Atiendo, voy a la escuela Vallejo High School y soy parte del decimo grado, sorry. Y mi experiencia con el miembro de congreso, Gar Mendi, fue una experiencia muy especial para mí, porque yo le pude preguntar algo que es muy cercano a mí, que es el tema de inmigración. Yo viniendo de familia inmigrante, yo siendo inmigrante misma, se me hizo importante tener que preguntar algo así que me afecte a mí y a mi comunidad. Y así fue como el miembro de congreso Gar Mendi nos dijo de que era importante de que nosotros fuéramos parte de un movimiento. No importe si nosotros somos los que, no importa si nosotros somos los que lo empieza. Good evening, my name is Sonia Valdez. I'm a sophomore attending Vallejo High School, second-year Willie Beacken Scholar, and as well as part of the Ser Latino Program. And my experience with Mr. Gar Mendi, Congressman Gar Mendi, excuse me, was a very special moment for me because I came from an immigrant family. I immigrated here myself, and I thought that it was important for me to ask regarding immigration issues that not just affect me, but those around me, my community. I thought it was important for me to share my story to Gar Mendi, and as I was sharing my story, he showed empathy, kindness, and knowledge as well. He shared his insight about it from a political view, and he made us realize that even if nobody starts a movement, we could be the ones that start something. And to me, as a Vallejo kid and daughter of an immigrant mother, it's really important to hear that from people sometimes, and yeah, thank you.
Good evening, my name's Zenaya Deleon. I'm a junior attending John Finney Continuation. I'm a member of the Student Trustee, Superintendent Student Advisory Council and a stepper from the African-American Parent Network. While on our trip, we got to talk to Congressman Gar Mendi, who is a congressman who oversees Solano County. We all had different experiences with him, and we all got to talk to him about different issues we had that, not looking at it from a political point of view, but kids who go through this in our community and have to go through this firsthand, we got to talk to him about what he's doing and his game plan as far as how he's fixing issues we have. For me personally, I got to ask him, because I suffer with anxiety myself, so I got to ask him what they're doing or, you know, a plan for the mental health and how they're helping students in school with their mental health, because it's already hard enough, and, you know, dismantling is just making it harder for us to learn and, you know, get through school. So I got to talk to him about that, and we also got to talk to him about him coming or doing Zooms and helping the youth out here, and so they get the same experience we did, and they get to empower, he gets to empower them the same way he talked to us about stuff that we can do as the youth out here, and the future for our city and our community. And so he told us how we can help him with stuff, you know, that he's doing out there politically, but we can also, you know, make a change ourselves, and we can make a difference out here. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Angela Kelly Santos. I'm the McKinney Venton and Foster Youth Liaison for the Vallejo City Unified School District. This was my first trip being a chaperone here, and when I tell you our Vallejo kids went and showed out and made Vallejo proud, that is exactly what they did. We tell them all the time, seize the moment, this is, you might only have one shot, be the change you want to see, and that's exactly what they did. When they got the chance to be in front of Congressman Gar Mendi, they were like, oh, only one more question. They were like, okay, that's fine, but we're in the elevator, so here goes another question. We're walking across the street, here goes something else. What are you going to do to help us? What are you doing now? Show me, I want the proof. Show me where your legislation is, where's this? You say you want to help us, then I need you to do that. And they made him and his workers commit to coming to the high schools, made them commit to making sure that they were going to keep in touch with them, and they didn't take no for an answer. It was like, no, this is what you're going to do. You work for us, and I want to see this done in my community. They also then caught another congressman on the stairs. They thought he was a doctor, and they talked to him about what he's doing there, and they also got a chance to get internships. So they met a person that works with the office, exchanged information, and now we have two of them that are going to Washington DC that told them to go ahead and give them the resumes so that they can go ahead and jump on and get residencies with the congressman and at the White House and Capitol. So when we give these kids these opportunities, they go out there and they make us proud. So I was a very proud teacher, was like, oh my God, look at my babies. And then they also made sure that they knew who they were. He put them on their social media, so Vallejo City Unified School District was on the congressman's social media, they were also in different newspapers and things like that, so kudos to you guys. Making us proud.
So I just want to highlight that which you just said real quick, because the first time, the first three or four times we've done this, we were asking, can we tell the story? Can we get the story out there? What can we do to say it? So this time, I am excited that we're at least highlighted in the City of Vallejo Weekly Highlights. We are on the school board website, we had an article in the Times Herald, and we're on Gar Mendi's Instagram. So that's the beginning of highlighting what our kids do in the City of Vallejo. When we do things great, we need to make sure everybody knows. So thank you so much for your time, your attention, and your money. Thank you.
I want to thank you all again for coming up and for sharing, for representing us well. I want to commend the boys with the noise. We have some wonderful young people here, and you all were cool as cucumbers in doing that, so don't forget that skill that you have. We didn't take a picture last time, so let's go ahead and take a photo with the group here, and then we'll get to our next item on the agenda.
Chair, can I say something to them? I want to tell you all, thank you so much for coming out and sharing. I look forward to hearing from you, because you are our tomorrow, and I'm very proud of every last one of you, and just keep on doing the work, and hold us accountable too, okay? Email us, anything you see that you're concerned, talk to us so we can talk to you, all right? I'm very proud of you.
Thank you all again. Congratulations, everyone. That is going to bring us to our next item, which is our community forum. So I'll go ahead and ask Manny to start that two-minute clock. We do have a lot of ambient noise in here as people exit, so we'll start that clock. We'll check and see, do we have any in-person commenters for our community forum? Peter, do we have any commenters?
Yes, we have three commenters already.
All right, so we'll take those three. We might have some time for anyone online, so please do raise your hand if you're online and want to comment. We're just about cleared out and ready to go. Why don't we go ahead and call our first speaker?
The first speaker is Clifford Porter.
Thank you. If you'll just begrudge me a minute to lift this up.
Yeah, lower, yep, there it is.
Thank you.
If someone in the back wouldn't mind, maybe we can get that sliding door to close in the back before, well, give us one second, sir. I think the chief's on it. If you could ask them just a step, just a smidge away from the door so it closes. Thanks. It's still not closing for whatever reason, but I think we're all right, so go ahead. Thanks for your patience.
No problem. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, and thank you, city council members. My name is Clifford Porter. I'm a resident of District Three in Glen Cove, and I have a public relations campaign that I'd like to propose to the City of Vallejo. Specifically, this is to give a new first impression to the City of Vallejo. I've been a resident for the last six years, and I've noticed that a recurring theme that often comes at the Glen Cove Community Center, as well as a number of other locations in Vallejo across all six of its districts, is the public perception and the public awareness of the City of Vallejo for many things that are outstanding and good, and things that may not be described as outstanding and good. And to that point, I'd like to propose to work with the city in all six districts and with the mayor's office to have a new public relations campaign for a new first impression for the City of Vallejo. I'll cut it very short. I have sent this flyer that I have here to each one of you. It is in your inboxes, it was sent today, and I'd like to leave this, please, with the city clerk to be reviewed at your convenience, and you are welcome to reach out to me with any further questions or thoughts at your convenience, and I will certainly be following up. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next is, sorry, Elizabeth Trujillo.
Hello, okay. Hello, everyone, good evening. My name is Elizabeth Trujillo. I shot an email to quite a few of you today, sorry, it's a lot. So I am here, I stand before you today to advocate for the right of Vallejo residents to opt out of the installation of the Advanced Meter Infrastructure, AMI Smart Meters. This right is not unprecedented. Numerous counties across California have recognized and implemented opt-out options, acknowledging the diverse concerns of their communities. Health and safety concerns. Recent studies have raised questions about the potential health impacts of radio frequency emissions from smart meters. While the California Public Utilities Commission has determined that PG&E smart meter technology complies with Federal Communication Commission's requirements, it is essential to acknowledge that some residents remain concerned about prolonged exposure to RF emissions. Providing an opt-out option respects these health concerns and allows individuals to make choices that align with their comfort and well-being. Regarding privacy and security issues, smart meters collect detailed data about household energy usage, leading to apprehensions about data, privacy, and security. Residents worry that unauthorized access to this information could compromise their personal life habits. An opt-out provision empowers residents to safeguard their privacy by rotating traditional analog meters that do not transmit personal usage data. Presidents in other counties, several counties in California have successfully implemented opt-out programs for smart meters. For instance, Marin County and the City of Fairfax have advocated for such options, reflecting their constituents' concerns. These jurisdictions recognize that offering an opt-out choice addresses public apprehensions and upholds individual rights. Pacific Gas and Electric Company has established an opt-out option program in response to customers' concerns. The CPUC authorized this program, allowing residential customers to choose analog meters as an alternative to smart meters. This decision underscores the importance of customer choice and acknowledges the validity of the concerns raised. In conclusion, implementing an opt-out option from four AMI smart meters in Vallejo is a reasonable and respectable approach to addressing the legitimate concerns of our community members by examining the actions of other counties and understanding the rational, sorry, rational behind PG&E's existing opt-out program. It becomes evident that such an option is both feasible and necessary. Let us prioritize the health, privacy, and autonomy of Vallejo residents by advocating for their right to choose the type of utility metering that aligns with their values and concerns. I'm also willing to pay the fine. My main concern is I have three children at home, ages 11, six, and a two-year-old. I spoke to Oney Brown, and he told me there could be a possibility that we'll get our water cut off, so that's really concerning for me, because I've never been late on my water bill, okay? So like, please, guys, just consider it. I can leave my email with whoever I need to.
Please do. We have it, and I've got to, we've got to cut you to keep things here, but we really appreciate it. No, thank you for the email, and thank you for coming.
Thank you. And our final speaker is Angela Mooney.
I think this is the right height.
And you can raise it up on the lower right.
My name is Angela Mooney. I'm a proud resident in Glen Cove and love to walk the trails, beautiful area. I haven't been here in the last couple months. I've meant to, but personal issues. But my dog was viciously attacked by a homeless man's dog while walking in Glen Cove in January. She had to end up having surgery. I hope Chief Talk can hear this, okay? The reason that I want him to hear this is it was very difficult to get the two pitbulls that attacked my dog off of her. And it was a beautiful day in the cove. The trails were full of people, okay? And I left the cove as quickly as I could with my dog. We were trying to get away. And I called the Vallejo Police Department via 911. Chief, I called the police department. They refused to come. They said it's not their policy to come, and animal control would come. An animal control officer did respond 40 minutes later. In the meantime, the homeless man and the two dogs went over to Benicia State Park, where I've not confirmed this to be true, but the animal control officer told me they killed a dog over in Benicia State Park. They returned back into Glen Cove, where they attacked seriously, critically, another dog and its owner, who ended up sustained injuries, sustaining injuries. And she had to have her two small children run home unattended while she fought off the two dogs. Multiple calls made to the police department to help, okay? I spoke to a lieutenant a couple days later after my dog had surgery. My dog's okay now. After my dog had surgery, I wanted an apology to check to see if we were okay by the lieutenant, and maybe look at them changing their policies a little bit. When there's an active, when there's an active weapon, whether it be something held by a human or an animal, the police need to respond. And he told me I was wrong, but I know I'm right, because there was a human that was injured, in addition to two other dogs. The dogs have been caught. But two things that I wanted to point out, when asked what I could do, the person that I spoke to, representing the police department, a police officer in a supervisory role, recommended that I buy a gun, that I learn how to use it, and that I get a concealed carry license. Chief Talk, are you embarrassed? I hope so.
Time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Number one, that is my question. Are you embarrassed that this happened? Number two.
Yeah. Thank you. We have to cut you off at the three, just like the previous speaker, but thank you for being here, and we're welcome to share this with us over email as well, if we can get her, we can get a card, and we can follow up with you that way. Thank you.
That's it for speakers.
All right. Do we have any online speakers?
Thank you, Mayor. We do have one online speaker.
All right, let's go ahead and call him.
Ann C., go ahead.
Hi, good evening, Council. Ann Carr here.
Give us one second, Ann. We need to turn the volume up.
It's her.
Oh, can you turn, can you speak more into the mic?
Okay, let me try, is this a little better?
It's not, we really can't hear you.
Oh, man. Hang on, let me see.
Nope, that's getting, it's getting better.
Okay. Now you can hear me?
Now you're good. Yep, go ahead.
Okay, can my time start again, please?
Yes, Manny reset it.
Okay, so I am calling tonight with two things on my mind. One is, I'm super excited, like many people, about the historic ships finally arriving to Mare Island. And the first one that got here last week was beautiful. There is, there are a bunch of people who are getting ready for when the Balcluther arrives, and I am with a group of people. We are practicing shanty sings, which were the work songs that are sung, that used to be sung aboard the ship. And we have a practice sing this Sunday, April 13th, at 2:00 PM at the gazebo on Mare Island. So, and then I was excited to hear there's historic reenactment things planned for the Balcluther, there's a parade of boats, blah, blah, blah. And that brings me to the second thing on my mind tonight is, wouldn't it be great if downtown was cleaned up for when we get this influx of visitors? It's a missed opportunity if it isn't. And along with that, we have known that this was cooking for a while. It would really be great if the Mare Island Museum had a home again, once again, and if the preserve was, you know, more readily open and managed. And, and in this, these are missed opportunities, but it goes back to the economic development plan from many, many years ago that said Vallejo should look to develop what they called second-day tourism. And the assumption was that maybe you could get families to come for one day to Six Flags, but if Vallejo had other things going on, then maybe people would stay over. So it's very exciting that these ships are coming in, they're beautiful, and I really hope that Vallejo steps up and just markets the heck out of them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Has anyone else raised their hand online?
None at this time, Madam Mayor.
All right. Thanks to all our speakers. We'll go ahead and close community forum and move on to our next item, which is our consent calendar. And I'll ask Manny to start our comment clock for the consent calendar items. And while we do that, I will ask my colleagues if anyone has any consent items they would like to pull from the agenda. Councilmember Gordon.
I was going to pull some concerns I had, but I want to thank staff for taking their time out to answer not only my email, but also calling me regarding these concerns.
All right, thanks.
And also to the city attorney as well.
All right. Did you have anything to pull? Councilmember Ledesu, go ahead.
So I'd like to pull 8E.
All right, so we're going to pull 8E, which is Adopt a Resolution Approving a Third Amendment to the Consultant and Professional Services Agreement with Municipal Resource Group, LLC. We're going to make that item, forgive me, 8.1. And I'm not seeing anyone else. I would like to pull the minutes simply to correct a typo on the March 18th minutes, which I think is going to require pulling the item. So we'll pull item 8A and make it 8.2.
Madam Mayor, there are some recusals that some of you have to make.
Correct. Do we want to do that now, or do we do that after the motion? We'll all start since my mic is on. I will need to recuse from item, I believe it's, I don't see it actually. Is it 8C? 8C, I just found it, because I live in Glen Cove. So I'll recuse from 8C. Councilmember Tulak.
Yes, I would need to recuse myself from item 8D, as in David.
I also need to recuse myself from 8C, as I live in Glen Cove.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I'll state it for you. The councilmember Ledesu stated that her reason for recusal, which has to be stated for the record, was living in that particular subdivision.
Yes.
That's true for the two of you as well.
I stated that as well. I had said that when I spoke.
Same for myself.
Do we have any speakers in person for the consent calendar? Okay, let's go ahead and call them.
We have one speaker.
Did we have any online?
None online.
Okay, let's go ahead and call them. Person speaker.
Daniel Boone, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. You've already pulled 8A, which is the item I was going to ask you to pull, but I would like to make a couple of comments about it. Words matter, and these particular words have quite a lengthy history about them. Really goes back to January 23, the Measure P Committee meeting, where the Measure P Committee elected to not recommend the $3 million in bridge repair money. The minutes for March 18, as they're represented on pages nine and 10 of your packet, should not be approved this evening, because they do not accurately reflect what happened at the March 18 meeting. That's important for at least two reasons. Number one, when you approve minutes which do not accurately reflect what happened at a previous meeting, number one, you create an incorrect public record that lives forever. And you also are relying on incorrect information in your decision-making. Specifically, I'd like to point out the word waived, which appears, this is under the, where the action is described. And it says, or implies, that the six conditions that were mentioned by the Measure P Committee were waived by the Measure P Committee. I was in the chamber that night, as you all were, and I heard Chair Salmeron call in and list the conditions that the Measure P Committee had put on on January 23. Some of those conditions were then incorporated into the motion that was offered by Vice Mayor Brigenzar and passed by the city council for step one of that $3 million appropriation. So that word waived needs to be changed, and these minutes need to be corrected. As far as I know, there is no compelling reason or legal reason that you have to approve them tonight. You can wait until they are corrected, and I would recommend that because this has significant history, and this is an important issue, that the actual quotation, the language, you could go back to the video, get the actual language of what was passed in that action item. Thank you.
Thank you. As long, as long as there are no other comments online, we are ready for a motion on the consent calendar. Councilmember Tulak, do you have something?
Through the mayor, I have a correction for my recusal. It's not for 8D, as in David. Mine is for 8G, as in George. My apologies for that confusion.
Madam Mayor, there were also some corrections provided to you in a correction memo with the resolutions for 8C and D, if those can be included in the motion as well.
Yes, thank you. I have that up right now. Thank you for the reminder. With that, I believe we are ready for a motion with the recusals of myself and Councilmember Ledesu on item C, and Councilmember Tulak on item E.
Okay, I move to, sorry.
G.
I did it again.
I move to approve the consent calendar and approval of the agenda, pulling 8E, which becomes 8.1, and 8A, which becomes 8.2, and including the corrections to 8C and D.
All right, let's go ahead and vote. And the recusals, we go ahead and vote on this, right? Our vote represents everything else.
Yes, yes. You go ahead and vote as part of the consent calendar, and then I will note it in the minutes. Okay, I'm missing one vote. There we go. That motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. That's going to bring us to item 8.1, which is previously consent calendar, item 8E. Adopt a resolution approving a third amendment to the Consultant and Professional Services Agreement with Municipal Resource Group, LLC, to provide continued policy development, process improvement, and analysis for the Human Resources Department, Finance Department, and City Manager's Office, and increase compensation to a new not-to-exceed amount of $375,000, authorizing the city manager to execute the same. And I will turn it over to Councilmember Ledesu, who pulled this item.
Thank you. So my questions really are, this has been going on since February 2023, and we've increased it, and I just would like to have just a quick synopsis of all the work that's been done and the value of that work, because we're almost, we're talking almost $400,000, almost a half a million dollars of service provided. So then my question is to City Manager Murray. Thank you.
Thank you. My colleague in the city manager is often Jason Ackley, the assistant to the city manager, oversees this contract and can provide a summary of the various services that have been provided. Jason is online.
Hello, Council. Happy to be here. MRG kind of supplies us with as-needed project assistance. So for instance, we recently did the RFP for the audit and control function, where we got new auditors in for finance. That was an MRG contract assisting with that. We've had some help in the HR department. They're helping the HR director with policy direction and assistance. I can get you a printout that I can supply of maybe the different scopes of work that have been under this. It's kind of an ad hoc contract. Whenever the city manager might mention, you know, we can bring in consultants to help with something. MRG is a kind of place where retired annuitants might go, so we end up with city managers and finance directors that work there, that we can kind of pull them into projects, and either project manage or give us kind of backup expertise. So it kind of runs the gamut. Recently, for the city manager's office, a couple years ago, I ran a project to look at our boards and commissions, and we're hoping to clean that up and bring that back to discuss boards and commissions with you. So it's kind of as needed.
So generally, what's the long, what is the term of these different projects? As an example, you mentioned one which is quite interesting, a review of all the different councils, and I think that's been going on for a while. But I would really like to see the scope of work, and I'd like to see the length of time and hours spent on that work, and the value of that work, and the timeliness of that work.
Sure, I can provide you that. That can be provided. I will say, it's usually about a two- to four-month turnaround on most of the projects is what we try to stick to. It really depends on how quickly we can get things back to council, and if the report's ready to go when we get it back in. For instance, the boards and commission review, that was done under the previous council. We meant to bring it back. It didn't make it back in time. So that's one that we're going to dust off and hopefully bring back to you this summer.
So when you say dust off, this is exactly to my point. How long, how many months did we spend on that report?
We spent about two and a half months, I believe, kind of compiling the information and putting it together, and then it didn't make it back to council during the last council. It was under the previous city manager, actually.
So thank you, but I'd like to see the scope of work, the different projects, the time spent on those projects, because I really would like to understand the value of this contract.
Absolutely.
Any other questions from colleagues? So my, my question for the city manager is, is there any urgency to this such that we, would it be reasonable for us to get the answer to that question and bring this back on consent at our next meeting? Or is there any urgency?
No, I don't think there's any urgency, so staff's happy to assemble that information, provide it to the city council if this item's continued.
Great, and I think it can probably go on consent at our next meeting if we get that information emailed to us and published in the packet for the next meeting. Do we need to make a motion for that, or are we okay going forward? I don't think we do. All right. That's, that's going to bring us then to item 8.2, which is the approval of minutes. This was approval of our minutes from special meeting on March 18th, and the special and regular meetings, March 25th, the special meeting on March 22nd. And I was going to raise exactly what Mr. Boone mentioned, which is the meeting, correcting the typo on the March 18th minutes. I'm hoping that the word waived maybe was meant to be raised, and it hit an autocorrect. So it might say, having the six conditions raised by the Measure P Committee. Does anyone have clarification on where that word waived might have come from?
Vice Mayor, you did make the motion, and I thought I heard wave, but you know, I'll know I have a hearing in Paramount.
It was raised.
So he meant, what did you mean?
Raised.
Raised, okay. So I will correct that typo.
Perfect.
That is Meyer. I apologize.
And I, yes, and I do think it would, if possible, be worth putting those six conditions in there. I think we had them written, I think we have them, they came directly from the Measure P Commission. So would we be comfortable going ahead and approving this tonight with the condition that those amendments be made, that the word waived be switched to raised, and the six conditions be added? And we'll just make sure we get that list to you.
Yes, I would ask that you make a motion to adopt or approve the minutes with those revisions.
Okay, I can make that. Okay, I can make that motion, or Vice Mayor, you want to make the motion? Go ahead. I never, you can make the motion. We'll stick to our rules.
I move to approve the minutes stated in consent item AA, eight A, excuse me, with the correction of waived, the word waived being moved to raised and including the six items, which will be provided to the clerk.
Great, thank you, and we're ready to vote.
And that, my motion carries unanimously.
Wonderful, thank you all. That is going to bring us to our action calendar, and I'll ask City Clerk Abramson to please announce item nine A for us as soon as you finish taking your note on the previous item.
Adopt a resolution approving a first amendment to the design professional services agreement with Nichols Consulting Engineers to increase compensation by $1,500,000 to a maximum not to exceed $200,000 for completion of the pavement management program and authorizing the city manager to execute the same.
Thank you very much. Oh, two, two million. It was to not to exceed two million. And I'll ask Manny to go ahead and start our public comment clock. Anyone wishing to address the council on this item can sign up in person at the kiosk or by raising your hands online, and we'll take public comment after our staff presentation. We have Transportation Manager Helmbrink here. Do we have a presentation on this item?
Just talking about it. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Mark Helmbrink, Transportation Program Superintendent, standing in for our Public Works Director tonight. We're looking for you to adopt the resolution approving the first amendment to the design professional services agreement. Again, this increases compensation by 1.5 million up to a maximum not to exceed amount of $2 million. NCE, Nichols Consulting Engineering, is our on-call engineering consultant to the city that specializes in pavement management. They're a sought-after firm that's been contracted to MTC to support their pavement technical assistance program and their Street Saber system for many years. We're lucky to have them on our on-call program. NCE's work with the city already includes completing our pavement technical assistance program, street network evaluation, which we do every three years under the PTAP program. We're using that data to develop our 10-year plan for pavement treatments for Vallejo's street network. And they're also engineering our Cape Seal project for this summer to improve surface conditions and preserve about eight miles of Vallejo's residential streets. So we're using them for multiple purposes all around this pavement program. Public Works intends to continue to use NCE as our, you know, preferred engineering consultant partner in the annual delivery of our pavement management program going forward for the remaining three years of their, of their contract. So that's really what this action is about. You know, the work will entail working with engineering staff on annual selection of pavement preservation and renewal projects, engineering those construction projects for each summer, including curb ramp compliance efforts, and documenting those results into our Street Saber database. So this action again is just to increase the contract amount, and the, you know, Public Works will use issued funds in the budget to fund those annual statements of work. You received the statements of work about the existing contract already in your, in your council packet. So that's really it about this. Just wanted to explain it, and I'm happy to answer questions.
All right, thank you very much. Do we have any, anyone signed up for public comment on this item?
No, not at this time.
All right, I'm not seeing any colleagues. Oh, Councilmember Mathias, go ahead.
Thank you for the presentation. Mark, I have a quick question. Does this scope include, actually, let me zoom out. Do parking lots and alleyways require design services from these folks or from this company?
Yeah, yes, it depends on, we would typically incorporate working on parking lots or alleys into a, you know, plan specs and estimates package that would go out to bid. Those need to be engineered. We would typically contract for those services, and so, yeah, we would use them as well.
You would use them for that?
I would think so, yeah.
Okay.
We have other on-call consultants that we could use. So if we know exactly what we're going to do, and it's just an engineering exercise, we've used Coastland for the grind and overlay project that's coming this summer because Nichols didn't have the capacity to deliver quickly enough. So we have other on-call consultants that we could use.
And the reason why I'm asking that, just for your awareness, is I believe at the, one of the previous weekly meetings we've had, I asked about us also putting some dollars behind repaving our city-owned parking lots in some of our alleyways, because they're in really bad condition, which is not a good look for us, especially with an influx of tourists coming in, you know, on weekends, see the boats, and for a whole host of other reasons. So I'm hoping down the line you can leverage this contract for that purpose, too. Thank you.
Sounds good. We should talk about that potentially as part of the parking enterprise as well.
Sounds good, thanks.
Thanks. Vice Mayor Bergenzler, and then Councilmember Gordon.
Can you go a little bit more into detail of what was actually added that we are going from $500,000 to $2 million for this contract? Did you add additional streets, or did you add other projects? I know you talked about kind of what they do, but what specifically have we added that we need to increase the, the design portion by one and a half million?
Right, so the on-call contracts run for up to five years. We're in year two right now. So this is really about increasing contractual option to use them for the next three years. We anticipate continuing to use Nichols Consulting Engineers for our pavement management delivery, right, annually. So on the agenda tonight is allocation of Measure P funding for this summer's paving program, right? And Nichols is one of the consultants engineering one of those packages. We have a request coming to the Measure P Commission Committee for, for next year, and we're going to need Nichols Consulting Engineers to engineer that package. So we will issue subsequent statements of work that we anticipate will be roughly in the order of $500,000 a year for the next three years to engineer those packages so that we can continue to deliver paving projects every summer. Does that answer your question?
It does. I just, you know, I'm concerned about, we, we should have planned for this, and it's, it's a five-year contract, and we only planned for $100,000 for each year, and now we're increasing it by 150%. So I'm just.
We, we.
Do we not know that these?
Bring, we bring the on-call.
Just sort of come forward.
Contracts as a group every year, and they start with an initial contract amount of $500,000, just as a, that's just what the contracts are authorized for. This doesn't actually allocate the money for the work, right? So when we pass the budget and we say we're going to deliver another pavement program, then we would take that money and put it into this contract and have them deliver the services. So.
Yep, thanks.
Okay, yeah.
Councilmember Gordon.
Yes, thank you for that, Councilmember Bergenzler, because I was wondering, so if, if a project is being done, it still will come to us before you, before you spend an extra money? Or you just wanting this to be a blank check up to 202 million dollars?
No, again, this, this doesn't allocate any money. The budget process allocates the money for projects, and it comes with the expectation that we might need, we will need to engineer those projects. And so the budget is typically allocated for the engineering services, the construction services, the construction engineering services. So when you do the budget, that's when the money gets allocated and the decision about what we spend the money on. This simply is a contract available for us to use to deliver those projects.
Okay, and this may not be to this particular, but I would like to know, how are you contracting? Because one of the things that we've been told, that Vallejo do not reach out to African-American contractors, and I'm not saying this is my words, these are concerns that people are having. How are you looking for contractors? Are you making sure that you're diverse and you're looking?
Yeah, slightly different topic.
Yeah.
But we use, we advertise all our bigger contracts on Planet Bids. So anything that goes above $100,000 per direction from council, we have to competitively bid, and we put those packages up on Planet Bids. They get advertised on the world wide web for everybody to see. And we also, on certain projects, have, you know, DBE, WBE, you know, requirements that we're trying to meet for those, for those packages as well. So, yeah.
And I know you're not saying that just because African-Americans, they would not, they don't have those requirements. I know you're not saying that, so I just want to correct that in case someone's thinking something. But I also concur with my colleague, Alex Mathias, is that we are responsible, we do, do we own magazine, the Norman King Center? Do we own the Norman King Center?
I, I believe we do, and it's under our contract master agreement with GVRD to operate and maintain and all that.
Thank you for pointing out, because they say they do not own the parking lot. That's the city's responsibility, and they're not responsible for the parking lot. So I'd like to know if I can make an appointment to talk to someone about that, because yes, I, I can send you the email. They said the parking lot is responsible to the city, and we have already had where people, I, I almost failed myself personally, because I went to them first, so their meeting, you can ask them, and then they politely corrected me and said that the parking lot is the city's responsibility. And we've already had two complaints already. So if you can please help me further, for future reference, can you please help me with that to clarify?
If I may, Madam Chair, certainly I can work with the Public Works Division to look at the master lease and verify one way or the other who's responsible for the parking lot.
I appreciate that. Thank you for your help. Thanks.
All right, Councilmember Ledesu.
Thank you for your time. So this is a five-year pro, a five-year contract. So when this contract was approved, was it initially for five years, or is it three years and up to five years?
I don't know that one. Debbie Martier, our administrative.
It's fine, someone will answer my question. Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Do we know anyone on the dais? Do we know that question?
Sorry, I don't know the answer to that question. We would need to get back to you.
And so just even again.
Sorry, just in the, in the staff report, we have options to extend to June 30 of '28. So it's typically, typically three years with two one-year options.
Okay.
Is what typically, I'm, I don't have this one exact, but that's typical.
Okay. Yeah, I was just wondering if it was a maximum of five years. And then just back to.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Sorry.
No problem. Thank you, I appreciate that. And back to Councilmember Bergenzler's question, in terms of, I know that we're not spending these dollars, if you will, but we know that we have a three-year contract to do this work with the possibility of extending for an additional two years. And what's really interesting, and I think this comment probably is more to our city manager, is when we're putting projects together, long-term projects, we should be able to budget for the entire five years or three years of the project versus bringing it in from a piecemeal perspective. And as a community member, prior to being on this dais, I watched that happen over and over again. And I think what's really fundamentally important when we talk about doing work, long-term vision work, is that when we make a presentation to council, we're saying, oh, we're going to do, this is going to be a five-year contract, this is the scope of the work that we're going to be working on. We're believing in costing out this work to be this, and this is what is needed. And I would really like to see that type of work done and brought forward to the council versus in piecemeal, so that we have a full, complete understanding of what is this project that we're envisioning, that we're scoping for? In this case, this is a 10-year pavement rehabilitation plan. What does that look like over the 10-year period of scope? So that we really understand what we're budgeting for, for a long-term period, because this is not year to year or every two years. This is a 10-year plan, and we should be able to see what is the potential cost of that 10-year plan with potential escalations and so forth and on. And I think we've talked about this before. So I would really like to see that type of planning for the work that we do in capital project work and these long-term projects that we are doing to maintain our streets, our buildings, whatever the case may be.
Thank you for that comment. I'll ask Mark to add some information on that. Just taking a look at this contract, it looks like it was, the contract term was originally a three-year term with the option to extend it at one-year intervals to make it up to a five-year total term. The total contract amount initially was $500,000, so $100,000 per year. And now the, the city council is being requested to increase that not to exceed amount. Mark, does the city have a five-year or 10-year plan for paving in terms of, as part of the capital improvement plan? Or have we been developing the plan on a year-by-year basis?
We don't have a five or 10-year capital improvement plan at this point, right? We did present at previous councils last year and I think potentially end of the previous year around when Measure P was passed and talking about bringing forward a 10-year paving plan of increased investment. We were having discussions around issuing bonds and bringing forward money to, to fund that. New council, new city management, didn't feel like right time to come back and talk about bonding. And so we got going with some Measure P money. We're in the process of finishing the 10-year planning part, piece of this, and then expect to bring that back to council. And then it would be great if we could budget out longer term around how we're going to fund that effort over, over a longer period of time. Because it is going to be, I mean, the expectation, I think, from everything I've heard to date is we want to be investing this level of, in our streets for that 10-year period. And that was one of the major goals of passing Measure P, so.
Great. So, so I know that Public Works and the whole city staff team aspires to have a long-term capital plan. We don't have one right now that would, for which we could provide multi-year costing for the design engineers and the construction component. But as we develop it, it's certainly our aspiration to be able to cost out those multiple years and get a multi-year funding commitment from the city council for those things.
So I would ask this question, because as I look at the staff report, reasons for recommendation is, we've had this contract for how many years so far? Two? Okay.
This is year, this is year two.
Okay. So I appreciate, again, the presentation, and I appreciate the explanation. And when I see to develop a 10-year pavement rehabilitation plan, so then the next question for me is, when you present it, is this is where we are, and we hope to bring back your 10-year plan by this time. And because I really do, I've seen it not happen, and I want to see what is the plan? How are we going to fund that plan? And really talk about the long term and not, I've seen projects be brought forth in piecemeals, and that's not your issue. It's to the city manager, and I'll restate that. It is to the city manager. I want to see long-term planning and not piecemealing, because this is very important, and I'm sure you understand that, because you're doing this work each and every day. So I thank you for it.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, we have limited staff. Our current focus is to try to make sure we don't miss this summer's construction window. So we're very much focused on finishing up those engineering packages for this summer's paving, the Cape Seal and the grind and overlay project. And the $10 million we'll talk about tonight funds that work, so we're trying to keep that on schedule. And as soon as we've got those out to bid and get those, those moving down the construction track, our next move would be finish that 10-year plan, come back and start talking about engineering and design, because we want to have that engineered and designed. So we're going out to bid in December rather than going out to bid in April. So we're trying to move things forward.
Sure. So how many senior engineers do we have on team?
Sorry, say it again?
How many senior engineers do we have on team?
One.
One. Okay. And how many other engineers at, associate-level engineers, how many do we have?
After Friday, it will be one in the engineering group.
Okay.
And then Tony Chews, the traffic engineer, works for me.
Okay.
And then Melissa's still an engineer.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. It's limited.
I hear what you're saying. I'm daylighting at Borwiesen.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot Farah. There's another one. There's two. I forgot her.
So you have how many?
I have two. After Friday, I have two.
Okay, thank you. And we will, I, I hear you, and I'm daylighting that purposely. Thank you for your work. I appreciate it.
Councilmember Matulak.
Thank you, Mayor. And, and you mentioned the point that you, you're using Nichols, and it sounds like you've got other consultants kind of in the wing. And can you help, help us understand how many other consultants do you have that does this similar type of work that it sounds like you use based on deadline priorities? That it sounds like you use based on deadline priorities?
So the on-call contract is for engineering services, and all of those firms have certain specialties that they do. We happen to have Nichols on here, and they're, they're one of the premier firms in the Bay Area, really, around pavement management. So we're lucky that way, and partly we, we get to look at the public works thing level and say, who do we really want to use out of our on-call stable, right? They did have a capacity issue trying to get us to construction this summer. And so we looked to another firm, Coastland, who's one of our on-call firms, who also does civil engineering work to design the grind and overlay package and the associated curb ramps, curb ramp compliance, um, aspect of that project. So we did tap into another one of our on-calls for that. We have two others. I can't name them for you. But yeah, we, we looked through them and checked out their specialties, and we have that option once we get them under on-call.
And to Dr. Lettigew's, um, um, point of, of trying to understand the value of, of a contract like this is how, how do we determine, or, um, I, I guess what I'm trying to ask is, for this, for Nichols particularly, can, can you highlight what they've done for us in the past that, in other words, are, are they used in emergency situations only? Or are they helping for part of the planning that we're doing that we're not able to meet or that they haven't been able to meet due to staffing issues?
I'm, I'm sorry. I'm not understanding your question.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So, so I, I guess to try to understand the value of how, what Nichols has, has provided for us, because you mentioned that they were having staffing issues at one point. And was that because of the type of pla, work, planning work that we were doing? That they, for some reason, didn't have the capa, the bandwidth to do that? Or was that something that we gave them the project too late in the, in, in the process to, to, that they couldn't meet that, um, that, um, schedule?
Right. So when we got the Measure P funding, we'd been kind of chasing our tail a little bit. We're a little behind, like, each year on getting the money at the right times and dealing with, how do we do it administratively and just catching up? By the time we came to Nichols with, we want you to do this work for us, they already had clients that were, they were working on construction projects for this summer, right? And so they said, you know, I have capacity to do the planning, the 10-year planning activity. We already had them, they had, we had them assigned to us by MTC for their PTAP grant to update our three-year, every three-year, um, evaluation of all the streets in Balaio. So they were doing that work for us already. And then, and then I had them doing the engineering for the Cape Seal project. And they just kind of said, uh, get somebody else to do the, the other $7 million project. So we did.
And, and to the point of the, the value portion of the fact that we'd, in the past, we didn't forward plan enough for, to get them involved ahead of the game. And it sounds like we're, we're correcting that by, by having this planning and to get them on board early enough to, to have them meet this, this type of, um, contract that we're looking for to, of, of this forward planning that we have for all of these, all, all this street work.
Yeah, that's correct. I mean, this and the Action 9C around allocating funding tonight, um, puts those resources in place. And we've been in the conversations with Nichols about, we get this package out for construction here. We finished the 10-year plan. We immediately look at what's the 2026 paving project. We're going to the MPOC about the funding for that construction for next summer, 2026 shortly, and we'll bring that back to council. And so we're scheduling it out so that, yes, they'll be working on the engineering of 2026 packages come early fall and be ready to bid those packages, hopefully December, January, this coming, '25, '26.
So thank you for making that adjustment to, with that forward thinking and ma, making sure that we're ahead of the game for something as important as this. So thank you for that.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you all. My, my question was mostly already asked by the vice mayor, but I wanted to clarify that if we had an original $500,000 contract, that has pretty much all, already been spent. So we are com, not committing this necessarily because it would just be a not-to-exceed, but this would be something that then we would need to budget for in the coming years? Is that something we were kind of already anticipating, a cost we knew we were going to have? And this is just a process of we're bringing in the additional cost or? To, to the vice mayor's point, I wanted to see if this is because there's an overage and an increase in cost on this consultant's part? Or if this is a simply time is passing and this is work that needs to get done, and we're asking them to do more work?
Yeah, I'll answer it in a couple of ways. I mean, we've, we've got this $10 million being allocated tonight. Part of that presentation includes the engineering money for 2026. So part of the money you're allocating tonight will likely go into this contract come the fall, right?
And that'll come from that 10 million? So when we do the $10 million, we're funding this? Okay.
Doing some funding on this. And this is really more the administrative end of it, just to increase the size of the contract, right? But the actual allocation of funding and doing the work, right, it is through the budgeting process.
Right. I appreciate that clarification. That's exactly what I was asking is, are we, are we going to need to fund this above and beyond? No, this is coming as part of that 10 million. Okay.
And then in your staff report tonight, there were three statements of work. Those are the three contracts that are in, in there right now and have already been funded. That work is not quite done. Those monies have not been expended yet. But it's getting us right up to the threshold of the current $500,000 cap on this contract. And we can see that we're going to need to change it. And so we don't want to keep coming back with this, so we're coming with like, okay, we think in the next three years of using them, 2 million is the right number. It could be off. We could be a little short. I don't know. We'll, we'll find out. Again, we hire these folks on qualifications, right, under the on-call program.
All right. Thank you. And my last, my last point is more of a, a comment and a request that I think per the previous conversation we had about the 10 million for road repair, I think there is some consensus on this council that we would like to see it planned out. And so I would love to come up with a way, even though we don't have a multi-year budget process, I would love for us to come up with a way to discuss, even give input during the process on some of the equity concerns with where the pavement, you know, where the road repair is going, making sure that it's reaching our underserved communities, that it's equitable across the city, and then maybe trying to approve a multi-year plan or the entire 10-year plan. Even if we can't necessarily commit to the funding all at once, we can sort of make that commitment that we intend to fund this and we intend to fund this from P. So that would be my request, that as the 10-year plan is developed, as we work more with this consultant, that that come back to council so that we can try to do what Councilmember Lettigew was talking about and have more of a, a forward-thinking, uh, approach to this. So with that, I think we're ready. Um, City Manager Murray, did you have anything else to add? Just seeing your mic, just double-checking with you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Um, are we ready for a motion? I think we are.
Okay. I move that we adopt a resolution approving the First Amendment to the Design Professional Services Agreement with Nichols Consulting Engineers, CHTD, to increase compensation by 1.5 million to a maximum not to exceed 2 million for completion of the pavement management program and authorizing the city manager to execute the same.
Thank you, and we're ready to vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Right. Thank you very much. We are having a Public Works evening because that is going to bring us to, uh, item 9B. Uh, City Clerk Abramson, could you please announce this item for us?
Dr. Resolution amending fiscal year 2425 capital improvement budget to appropriate and expand highway bridge program grant revenue in the amount of $21,861,377. Measure P budget in the amount of 3 million. And bridge construction fund budget in the amount of 300,000 for the Mare Island Causeway Bridge Preventative Maintenance Project, step 202.
All right. Thank you. And I'll ask Manny to go ahead and start our public comment clock. For folks online to raise their hands if they'd like to comment. And anyone wishing to speak on this item in person will have you, invite you to do so once we receive the staff presentation. And we still have, uh, Mr. Helmbricht here. Um, do we have a presentation on this item?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Again, Mark Helmbricht, Transportation Program Superintendent, standing in for our Public Works Director, Melissa Tigbaugh. I'll run through the presentation. It's going to look very familiar. And then I'm happy to answer questions. Uh, next slide, please. So the Mare Island Causeway Bridge Project, 202012 Caltrans Bridge Inspection Reports indicated repairs were needed. Project was included in the Bridge Preventative Maintenance Project, BPMP, for federal funding. And then in fiscal year 201516, Caltrans appropriated funding for the preliminary design, environmental, public outreach, and construction documents. Those two grants over 15 and 16 totaled a little over $1 million. Caltrans ultimately delayed appropriation for the construction of the, of the project during COVID. But then in fiscal year 2324, Caltrans appropriated funding for construction at the amount of $10,925,487. That was based on the engineer's estimate at the time. Again, the scope of work for this project, uh, spot repair and overcoat lift span and towers, repairing cracks, spalled and delaminated concrete, concrete in the substructure and superstructure, repairing cracks and applying a polyester overlay, lay on the bridge deck, replace deck joint seals, replace damaged sidewalks, repair or replace deteriorated piles, repair and replace metal railing posts, under, replacing the underwater anodes, uh, restore the logo, clean, repair, and paint metal railings, repair existing timbers, timber fenders, and repair and replace existing lighting and apply traffic striping to the bridge deck. We advertised the project on, in August of 2024, and bids were opened October of 2024. We received two bids. Our low bid was $19,869,755, and our second bidder was over $25 million. The low bid contractor has been holding his bid price until May of 2025. In November 2024, staff contacted Caltrans, request additional grant funds. Caltrans agreed to appropriate additional funds in fiscal year 2425 to the tune of $10,935,890 for this construction project. This shows our, our budget to date. The first four items on there are these federal, uh, bridge program grants received. Fund 112 is the Mare La, Mare Island Community, uh, Fund? CFD, Community Fund District. And during years 2012 to 2016, 2 million, almost 21, 2.1 million was allocated to this project. And then we have some bridge construction fund dollars that remain and have been also allocated to this project in the budget. But there's part of the action tonight is to formally put those into the CIP as well. The 22, almost $23 million in federal, um, bridge grants require an 11.47 local match. That match is roughly $3 million, a little under $3 million. So based upon the bid price for construction, the total project budget is now $28.3 million. And you can see we, in the current budget, we have $25.3 million. So this includes design engineering, project management, uh, bidding, grants management, contracting, construction, construction management, and inspection. So with the allocated funding of what we see above, this leaves a $3 million funding gap. We went to the Measure P Oversight Committee in January of 2025. They denied our recommendation of the Measure P funding. That was primarily due to transparency with the Mare Island residents around paying CFDs. The committee requested, um, documents that Ms. T had been asking for and, uh, requested staff to clarify if CFD funds can be used as matching funds. They can be. So 2.1 million of CFD funding was appropriated in fiscal years 2012 to 2016 towards the bridge repairs, as well as part of the design and engineering to date have, have used some of those funds. So bridge repair qualifies as CFD expense, and all local funds can be used as grant match. This project needs 3 million to cover projected total project costs, and we recommend allocating 3 million to Measure P. Funds in addition to the 300,000 of Bridge Construction Fund and the 21,861,377 in Highway Bridge Program Grants into the project. Those are the actions we're asking you to take tonight. If steps approved, step two is approved, staff will present a ward of construction contract at your next meeting on April 22nd to allow construction phase to begin in May of 2025. Not approving the budget means the project lacks the necessary matching funds for the federal grants. Cannot award the contract at this time. Results in returning grants to Caltrans and deferring repairs to a later date with unknown, unknown financing costs. That's all I've got for you tonight. I'm happy to take questions, and I think we have others online as needed to talk about other aspects that might be asked.
All right. Thank you. I'm actually gonna, um, I see Councilmember Matthias, and we might be about to say the same thing. So feel free to, uh, uh, say that. I'm going to say one thing before we take the public commenter, which is, I am, I'm disappointed that this staff report didn't include council's request from the last meeting when we approved part one to have the issues raised by Measure P Committee addressed. We did get an email. The email was sent to, I believe, the Measure P Commission, the, uh, individuals from Mare Island who had raised the issues and to council. But for transparency sake, a big part of this process was us requesting that information. So it would have been great to see in the staff report that that information was requested as part of part one and that staff followed up with that information, just as a, just as a note. And I'm doing this as a point of feedback, but mainly as a point of transparency to say that that, that was something that there was communication on. There were some follow-up questions. But I would have loved to see that here. And I'm going to take Councilmember Matthias, and then we'll go to public comment if that works. Go ahead, Councilmember Matthias.
I'm not sure if you, you'd be able to answer this question, but the staff report, in the staff report, you said you guys found money from some 1978 tax that was passed that was then repealed some year after. It was like something from 40 years ago. I have so many questions. So many. Can someone give me at least some explanation for that?
I think you're referring to the Bridge Construction Fund.
Yes.
Budget that's listed at 300,000. I don't know the background on that one. I just know it is, been located, is part of a fund that was dedicated for the bridge and the bridge maintenance and is a, this project is directly associated with it, and it's a good use of those funds at this time. Why they're still sitting around, I couldn't, I couldn't tell you.
I mean, that, that's not like $5, you know, that's a good chunk of change. So any other additional context you can?
I don't think. Reka's here. I don't think she has any information on that. You know, very old. I, I know that Aaron Hanford is also online and knows much of the history of the CFDs, but I don't think she would necessarily know the history of the, a bridge replacement fund from that long ago.
You have nothing?
She appears to not.
I do, I do not. No, I'm sorry. Hi.
That was Aaron. Yeah, thank you, Aaron. And we have Reka also indicating she does not either.
I do not.
Okay. So as you guys all know, I, I voted against this the first time, and, um, I still, I mean, this is just another example of the underlying concern that I have around anytime something comes up, we're going to get Measure P dollars, um, to either co, uh, cover cost overruns or if we didn't really look under the hood for long enough, then, you know, at least Measure P's there. And so, um, I'm, I'm really still struggling with that. Uh, I, at the same time, I also feel like, uh, to quote my colleague, Councilmember Lettigew, we've got to fail forward. So I'm going to start, I'm going to propose, um, some accountability measure when these things happen again that I think can both address and, um, better these issues. And also continue to pump back money into the community, which was the original intent of this tax measure, not to use it anytime there's overruns or delays or whatever the case may be. So I'll just end my thoughts there for now, and then I'll come back. Thank you, Mayor.
Perfect. Um, all right. Let's go ahead and take our, our public commenter.
Danielle Boone is our speaker, please.
While he's walking up, do we have any speakers online?
None at this time, Madam Mayor.
Thanks. Go ahead, Mr. Boone.
Uh, well, good evening. As I said the last time I addressed this, uh, on March 18th, I know you're going to approve this money. You've been put in a corner. Uh, you can't. you're going to approve this money. You've been put in a corner. You can't not take the $21, $22 million in state funding. So you gotta do it. But circles back to what I said earlier. Thank you for correcting the March 18 minutes. So the six conditions were raised by the Measure P Citizens Oversight Committee and were, and those minutes now, as corrected, says that they are to be brought forward as part of Step Two before the council makes a decision on the second step. Well, pages 192 to 200 of your packet, if you get the same packet that I do, those are the PDF pages. There is no mention of the conditions whatsoever. And that includes the attached resolution that you were going to be voting on. Conditions not mentioned. So we start in January 23rd. The Measure P Committee lays out conditions. And then you heard about them when Chair Salmeran called in on March 18th. And they were incorporated into the motion that you passed. And now it's as though the conditions have just disappeared into thin air. There's no mention of them at all in your packet materials or the resolution that you're gonna pass. That's just not right. And the three questions, this presentation that you just saw is another complete misrepresentation of what happened on January 23. On January 23, the issues that were raised or the questions that were raised were, and we've repeated them to you here in past meetings, where is the $6 million that was collected from Lennar? And why hasn't the city collected the $2.8 million that is due, that it should have been collecting from Mare Island Company? That's close to $9 million. And then the third follow-on related question is, why wasn't that money available for bridge repairs instead of having to go to Measure P? And that's why the Measure P Committee said, "These questions should be answered before you come and get money from Measure P." So I know you're gonna approve the money, but I hope that after you approve it tonight, you will still pursue answers to those questions because nine million missing dollars in a city that constantly claims how broke it is, that's important.
Thank you. Have we had any other hands raised online?
None at this time, Madam Mayor.
All right. Further comments from council. Councilmember Matulik.
Thank you, Mayor. And I think from our last conversations on this issue, I think the question was raised of paying back this money back to Measure P and what was the final conclusion that we determined? Because there was different funding mechanisms to go about this and I don't think we came to a conclusion of which one was appropriate or which one was, because it sounds like it's all gonna be coming from general fund at some point, but it's a matter of how do we, how do we get this back into the Measure P funding? So if we can get some resolution on that, I think that would help us move this forward.
Any comment on that from the city manager? The question was to the discussion we had last time about potentially using general fund or other sources in reimbursing Measure P?
So, yeah, so I mean, there's, the general fund has an available fund balance of an amount greater than what is being requested of Measure P. So if the city council would prefer to pay for this out of the general fund, the city council can make that decision tonight. It's, there's no, I don't know that functionally there's any difference in, you know, having Measure P loan the amount to the general fund and then, you know, paying it back from the general fund. It can be, it can just be paid straight from the general fund and that's an appropriation decision that can be made this evening.
But isn't that a budget allocation we would need to do to address that at this point?
I think Reka's comment, the last time when you discussed this, if I recall correctly, was it's, they're both general funds. Measure P's general fund money.
So we're not having to?
We account for it separately and she makes ledger accounts for it separately, but it's general funded, general funded.
And that was the question I was getting from the community when this was brought in, was the semantics and understanding how this, how that would work. And I think that's where I think the community is looking for that clarification, understanding that it's basically the same money. It's just, it's just, yeah. So hopefully that's gonna help explain to the community of the, of what we've talked about of paying it back to where it's basically the same thing.
I don't recall that as part of the Step One approval, the city council directed that the money from Measure P be a loan that be repaid from the general fund.
Correct. That was, it was just simply a question that the community had asked that we did previously to fill a stopgap measure for, for something we've done in the past. And that was the question of, is it, was it, was it something that was viable here? And I think we came to the conclusion that it's the same monies, but the community wanted to understand what the difference was of how, of what, semantically of how is that different from what it was, what we've done in the past. And it's basically the same thing that we're doing.
If I may clarify, it's just the tracking that we do it separately.
Correct, correct. And I think that was where the missing link was, is the community or the previous council or this council, it was, we wanted to make sure that we had that same understanding.
I guess I'll just add a thought. I think one thing in staff's mind that distinguishes this project and this request for Measure P funding is that it's a infrastructure and roadway project, which is different from another project that has requested that ended up being funded by Measure P. And so I think in staff's mind, Measure P for this particular ask is not simply a stopgap measure, but staff views this as an appropriate use of Measure P funding, consistent with the intent, which I think is different in staff's mind. I'm not saying that the city council or community views it in the same way, but I think that's part of the inspiration for requesting Measure P funding for this particular project.
Thank you for that clarification.
Vice Mayor Brigenser.
To Councilmember Matulik's point, I think the discussion was, I know that it's the same pot of money, but is there a mechanism that we can replenish the Measure P money over time, like maybe a million and a half for the next two years so that that $3 million ends up back in the accounting for Measure P if we're going to take that without approval from that commission? Is that, is that something that we can document and verify to make sure that that happens over the next two years, that we replenish the 1.5 each year or three years if we do it for three years and pay 1 million each? I think that was kind of what the discussion was if we were gonna, I know that you can't loan from one to the other, but can we, can we as a city replenish Measure P money that we've taken from the general fund?
Yeah, so I'll defer to the finance director, but I'm sure there's a mechanism. So again, Measure P technically speaking is part of the general fund. It's a general tax, but we account for it separately. And so I'm sure there's an accounting mechanism to recognize some funds to replenish Measure P. What that would mean is that their, the city council would need to budget additional general fund money to make that replenishment over whatever time period the city council would like to replenish it. But yeah, I'm sure that we can come up with an accounting mechanism to do that if the city council would so like.
Okay. And then you did mention that we could just use the general fund. Do we have enough funds to do the general fund and not use Measure P right now? I think we're, do we, or do we not have the funds to do that through the general fund at this point?
Yeah, there's, we have an unassigned fund balance in the general fund. We're gonna be talking about assigning some of that funding later this evening. I think the, at the end of this fiscal year, the unassigned fund balance is going to be something like 23...
25 million, we are estimating?
$25 million.
Sure. So you're talking about the reserves, not currently what's in our budget?
Yeah. I mean, we don't, the city of Vallejo doesn't technically have a reserve. So that's just money that happens to be in our bank account that hasn't been appropriated for anything. But yeah, that's, that is the only resource that the city of Vallejo has. Some cities have a rainy day reserve or an emergency reserve fund. We don't have that. The only general fund resources that are not committed to something are just what are sitting in general fund balance.
Sure. But I think that's semantics. I think we're talking about the same thing though, of that being basically the reserves for the city.
Yeah. That's our available funds.
So there's not general funds unless we want to get into those reserves other than Measure P. I just want to be clear about that. Thanks.
Thanks. Councilmember Gordon.
Yes. I do want to ask, this is the third time since I've been on dais, in a dais in 91 days. We've been in, I've been hearing from Mr. Boone, $6 million, $2.8 million, close to $9 million. What is that about, please?
This is about a continuing, ongoing conversation about sub life vac. So that's leasing furtherance of conveyance monies that originally came to the city of Vallejo through an agreement with Lennar Company. There has been a, I'll use the word debate, about whether those monies remain due and owing, even though now the fee interest in the property has changed. We have some discussion of that item scheduled for your next council meeting in closed session and we will be discussing where we have and have not gotten with that and giving an update to the city council.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Councilmember Paul Myers.
Thank you. So I'd like to echo the mayor's point from early in the conversation. Actually, it was the first point she made. Well, her disappointment about, we're not seeing, you know, some of the considerations that, or some of the things that we asked for. I know I was very pointed about, you know, I get that we have to pay for this, but, you know, I want to make sure that we are learning from what we, what just happened and making sure that we're not, we're fixing the mistakes of like how it got from Measure P to here, how it, how it seemed like there was a unanimous no on this from Measure P and it still came to us for our consideration. So I mean, as, you know, I know I wasn't the only one who mentioned this. So was there any discussion about this on how to fix this process further?
So I think, I mean, a natural part of the commission, the board and commission process is that the boards and commissions make recommendations within their scope and purview and using their expertise to the city council. And then it's up to the city council to make a decision, like you, you know, are advised by the planning commissioner or other boards and commissions. So I guess there are many administrative things for city staff to work on in, to better support our boards and commissions. And I think with Measure P in particular, because it's such a significant source of revenue and a matter of such significant community interest. And not all of our boards and commissions have been administered in a consistent way across the city, which is something we're trying to fix. So I don't know that the, the process, in the same way that the city staff might bring forward a development-related proposal that did not have a planning commission approval for the city council's consideration, city staff might occasionally bring forward an item that doesn't have a border commission recommendation because city staff still believes that's in the best interest of the city. I think a point that you raised during the last conversation was, does that, you know, represent some sort of a learning opportunity? And I think it potentially does, which is, and, you know, we have a liaison system between our city council and boards and commissions, but any city council member I think can reflect on what happened in this series of events and figure out whether it means that something needs to be changed process-wise. And I don't think, I mean, city staff, apart from the more general effort that we're trying to make to, you know, provide better support to our boards and commissions and make sure they're administered more consistently, I don't think we had any specific ideas about what to change in response to this particular agenda item.
Sure. Well, if I can make a recommendation, I think a starting point is if we are in a situation where there's at least a majority no from the Measure P Committee, but there's still a lot of, say, enthusiasm from staff to push it to city council, I think that should trigger that the liaisons, is it more than one liaison? The liaisons should have a robust conversation with the commissioners and try to collect their ideas and thoughts and maybe some, give something back to the council versus, you know, we're making this decision and, you know, all I had was really, you know, one public comment from, from a commissioner, a series of questions from another commissioner, but, you know, I've wanted to, I think that should have triggered a more robust conversation and a collection of ideas from liaison with the commissioners. That's a starting point. I'm only spitballing right now, but I think that's, I mean, to me, that seems, at least warrants that kind of discussion. You know, free to open to, you know, like to discuss it with other council members and see if that seems like a starting point. I don't know if we're gonna figure that out today, but, you know, right now I'm saying like, one, I'm disappointed that this isn't come back with at least some ideas, but I am providing my own idea and maybe that's a starting point we could look into. Secondly, I know a couple of times, you know, we talked about, you know, well, this is all coming from the general fund. So this is to Director Nayar, but is, are there any negative consequences of using the general fund, you know, so long as we're not dipping into the, you know, reserve that you can identify right now, to use that instead of Measure P? I noticed tracking differences, but is there any negative consequences for doing that?
Other than dipping into the reserve?
Not, not dipping into the reserve.
Then we do not have that money in general fund. It's the reserve.
Okay. We, we don't, just so to be clear, we don't have that money without having to dip into the reserve.
If we had the money, yeah.
Okay. I just want to be clear about that. Okay. So that's the real negative consequence. Okay. Thanks.
All right. I'm gonna jump in with a follow-up that and then we'll go to Councilmember Matias. I appreciate you following up on next steps because I, I think for me, the frustration with the item and the learning opportunity and the need for follow-up is really the way that the process went. This came to Measure P. The Measure P Commission wasn't comfortable voting on it because they needed additional information. They wanted their questions answered. And they were advised at the meeting that you have to vote on this and you have to give either an up or a down vote. And so they gave a down vote because they wanted additional information. That was how it was characterized to us by the commission. Then it came to council. Basically, the response to that was, we're gonna, we're gonna disregard what the commission asked for, bring it to council as if that didn't happen, and just basically say, well, council, you're the decision makers anyway, so we don't need Measure P. We're just gonna overturn them, even though they didn't, they just wanted additional information. It wasn't even that they were saying, we don't want to make this expense or do this allocation, but that wasn't brought to us. And then we had to have people from the Measure P Commission contact us. Then we made that request and said, hey, we want to fund this, but we owe it to our commissioners who are volunteering their time for the city of Vallejo to get their questions answered, got their questions answered. And then we get Part Two and there's no documentation of that. That's the process that we need to fix. And we need to fix that because we're, we are, we're boxed into a corner because we're basically being told, you need to approve this or we'll lose $21 million. We need to repair the bridge. But can we, can we come up with a way that we can actually let our commissions function the way that they need to function? Was there a way that they could have had a follow-up meeting and continued that item and gotten their questions answered and not been forced into a vote? Was there a way that if a commission rejects something with follow-up questions, that those follow-up questions can be incorporated into the presentation to city council initially, so we don't have to do this one and two-step process? And if city council requests something, because we did as part of our motion last time, can we make sure that that's included in the follow-up? There were, there were three points, I think, where this could have been remedied. And, and that's my, that's my piece of feedback. Because yeah, we don't want to just keep getting boxed in and not doing right by our folks. It doesn't feel good to the commissioners. So that's my, that's my comment in addition to what Councilmember Palmer has just said. And now we'll go to Councilmember Matias.
So I just want to make a couple, a couple of quick points and I hope we can move on to a vote because we've got a few other items. The first point I'm gonna make is I... The first point I'm going to make is, I, the thing I, I, I struggle with is on sort of three fronts. Number one, before I was elected to office, in fact, when Councilmember Palmares was sworn in and the tax measure passed, there were multiple times, and this predates your tenure, Mr. Murray, that staff was bringing projects to the council, and Councilmember Palmares specifically would say, hey, I think the council should be consulted on ahead of time. I don't think these projects should be coming before council without us giving any input. And so you're looking at a now two-year period where this process has continued, and this body hasn't been able to provide input on. And maybe goal-setting is a opportunity for us to align around, hey, these are the priorities for the city. By extension, what that also means is that if staff's going to propose that we use Measure P dollars for this, that they'd be in alignment with the priorities that the council is sort of setting for the city in a year, as opposed to the other way around where they set priorities or now we set priorities, and then we've got these ad hoc projects coming in where we don't really know if it's tied into our priorities every year, and then we're having to cover overruns, which gets me to the second point. So it's less about the justification of the tax, right? Like, so this money's being used in alignment with infrastructure repair or streets or whatever it was, right? It's more with the fact that you've had, the issue has more to do with the fact that you've had now multiple instances where there's been overruns that have been covered by, with Measure P dollars in a city where we lack resources, and the evidence of that is the fact that we haven't repaved our roads in a long time. You didn't have repavement money, substantial repavement of traffic calming money for over a decade, right?
Yeah, the last big paving program was in 2018.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's been, that's been a hot minute, and so we can't put money into that, and every time we're being asked to cover something, we're having to take that money that the voters gave us, you know, a vote of confidence on and said, hey, here's an extra chunk of change so you can address quality of life issues, and instead we're using that money to have to cover, you know, what is a delay. It's in the presentation. There was a delay. And then the last point to my colleagues, I think, you know, I hear Councilmember Matulak and our vice mayor around, you know, possibly the, using this as, as a loan and repaying it back, but, I mean, like, let's be serious, guys. Like, honestly, are we in a position to repay that back anytime soon? I mean, unless we see explosive economic growth, but chances are, we're probably not going to pay that back aggressively unless we really line up dollars to make sound investments in our city, and then that acts as a multiplier to bring in more revenue into our community, right? So I think the one thing I would just tell the community is, like, we want to limit these instances where this, this is happening. We're going to work with staff to make it happen, and the thing I'm going to propose tonight, which doesn't address any of the, the underlying issue, this needs to be approved, is I want to make a referral to the Measure P Commission so that one percent of the total budget cost, so that would be two hundred and sixty thousand, be considered by that commission to go into public arts. So every time something happens that is not supposed to happen, I would like for some of that funding as a match, whether it's one percent or whatever the cost is, to be considered by the Measure P Commission as a match or as a, some contribution that we're making back into our community, so that as we're covering these issues or these error or these overruns, these mistakes, we are also pumping money back into the community, and I think the arts is an opportunity to do that. So again, I'm not asking you guys to sign off on a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar expenditure this evening. I am asking that there be a referral made as part of this approval to the commission so that they consider that request, and we put that money aside into the arts as we're also addressing a critical infrastructure need in our community. So I'll leave it there, and thank you for the time, Mayor.
Thanks. Councilmember Lettu.
So one of the things I am going to say is, we can't continue to have these kinds of mistakes, because Measure P funds are slated for certain things, and yes, it is true that you're fixing a bridge, we have grant money, and the reality is, it's fine that we are offering to put money where it's supposed to be, but that should not have to be a condition. Ultimately, the condition is that we do the things that we're supposed to do, we do them in a timely manner, and that, yes, sometimes things happen, but things happen too often, and we need to figure out in our systems how to do this well, so that there are instances here and there where something might fall. That, that's understandable, but we have a lot of things that are falling, and we really need to figure out what are the systems that need to be in place so that we aren't backed in corners to make these kinds of decisions, and monies go where they're supposed to go. And I want to say that because I think it is prudent and important that we figure out, city manager, how to do that. Not sometimes, but all the time. And again, we can all admit that sometimes we do have slips, or sometimes we might have to make other decisions because we just don't have enough. But this is often, and it doesn't, not only does it not feel good, it's inappropriate, and it's irresponsible when we have to do this.
Thank you. So I, I think we might be ready for a motion. I would add, and I don't know, Councilmember Mathias, are you offering direction? Are you wanting to put that into a motion? You're wanting to put that into a motion? I would also like to offer direction that I would like to see us develop a plan to roughly budget Measure P when we do the rest of the budget. So not do the general fund budget and then use Measure P to fund extra stuff throughout the year as things come up, because I think that's what leads us to tend to use it for cost overruns. I'd like to see us engage the Measure P Commission to set priorities and try to at least project out the Measure P fund in advance. I don't need that to be a part of the resolution right now, but I want to say that right now, that that's something that I would like to see. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
I just have a question for Councilmember Mathias. I just want to be clear. So you're asking that whenever there's an issue like this, then Measure P will expend an additional one percent of their funds on public art? Is that what you're asking?
Capital improvement projects, right? So in this instance, we have a total project budget of twenty-six million approximately. One percent of that, there's an overrun, so I would like one percent of that to be, go back to the commission to be considered as monies that would be inputted back into the community as part of a public art program. So I would like for them to consider it as a future agenda item. So I'm not committing this council to doing that. I would just like for them to explore that.
So not part of this resolution? Because I guess my, my question is, so you're saying that the general fund would contribute the one percent towards Measure P so that they could allocate that one percent from the general fund, how, for public art? That's what you're saying?
It would be Measure P in, through the priority of keeping spaces clean and beautiful.
I understand that, but where's the funding coming from? The funding's coming from general fund, or are the fundings coming from Measure P funds?
From Measure P each time it's used. But I, for this instance, I'm only talking about the agenda item in front of us.
Yeah. I guess my concern is that we're then handcuffing Measure P to spend more of their money when we make decisions on their behalf. I guess I'm not.
No, I'm not. What I'm suggesting is that they explore it. I'm not, it's a referral. It's not something that I'm telling them they have to do.
Okay. I'll accept a referral.
Yeah.
All right. Are we ready for a motion then?
Okay. I move that we adopt a resolution amending the fiscal year 2024 cap 2025 capital improvement budget to appropriate and expand highway bridge program, HBP, grant revenue in the amount of twenty-one million, eight hundred and sixty-one thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars, Measure P budget in the amount of three million dollars, and the bridge construction fund budget in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars for the Mayor Island Causeway Bridge preventative maintenance project, step two of two. And we want to add.
My referral.
The referral to the Measure P Committee to adopt, to consider one percent spending for overruns.
Yeah, to go to public arts for this project.
For public arts, sure.
All right. I think we're ready to vote.
So that motion carries with Mayor Sors and Councilmember Lettu opposed.
All right. Thank you. We are staying with Public Works. We're going to move on to item nine C. City Clerk Avrinstone, would you please announce item nine C?
Adopt a resolution amending fiscal year 2425 CIP budget to appropriate and expend ten million of Measure P funding for the streets paving 2025 Measure P project, step two of two.
All right. Thank you. And I have a suggestion for this item. We have some discussions on public safety coming up. This is a step two of two. We had a pretty robust discussion about this last time, so I think if we have, do we have a presentation on this item? Great. I think we, if we have additional questions, we can ask them, but I'm hoping with a step two of two, we can move through this one a little more expediently. We do still have Mr. Heimberg with us. Thank you again for your third item. Is there anything you'd like to share with respect to this item? And then we'll also open up the public comment window.
Just to reiterate, you know, this is going to fund this summer's paving program. We talked about it previously. It's a ten million dollar program that's in engineering right now. I've got the hundred percent plans in for the Cape Seal project, and I'm waiting, going to meet with the Coastland next week about the seven million dollar grind and overlay project. We're looking at eleven miles of Vallejo streets getting, you know, resurfaced and repaved. It includes some money to start the engineering for 2026, which was discussed with the Measure P Committee. You've seen the streets list in there. There are streets in every council district, not in both project, not in both projects, but in the, the Cape Seal project, there's, there's streets in every council district. The grind and overlay is more focused on arterials and collectors, and those tend to be towards the middle of the city where they carry the most traffic. So happy to answer questions.
Thanks. Any questions from council members or comments? We might be ready for a motion on this. Let's do it.
Through the chair, just wanted to inform you, there were no public comments.
Oh, thank you. See, I'm so eager to move that I forgot to ask if we had public commenters, and we've had our two minutes expire, so there was no one. Thank you for the reminder.
If I can just follow up, I know that, I believe it was Councilmember Gordon that asked last time if, when you list the projects, you could list actually which district they were in. I don't know that we requested it to be specifically for this item, but in the future, any of the roads, so that it's very clear which districts each of the roads are in.
The Cape Seal list has them on the left side. The one, two, three, those are the council districts on the left side. It didn't make it onto the grind and overlay. I have those if needed. I can certainly.
Thank you.
That's right, and that can be going forward. We had talked about also having a map.
Just having it clear which districts each one of them are. Yep, okay.
Thank you for that to my colleague, because, yes, I did notice it on one, but I didn't notice on the other, but I appreciate that. Any projects coming, moving forward, please list it in the district. Thank you for remembering that, Councilmember.
All right. Are we ready for the motion?
I move that we adopt a resolution amending the fiscal year 2024, 2025 capital improvement budget to appropriate and expend ten million dollars of Measure P funding for the streets paving 2025 Measure P project, step two of two.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right. Thank you very much. That is going to move us to item nine D, and I am wondering if we might want a five, quick five-minute recess just for a bio break. Why don't we do that? Because we've been up here for a couple hours. So let's take five, let's come back at nine, ten, and we'll do our public safety items. All right, I'm going to encourage us to work our way back so we can get started again. All right, I am going to go ahead and bring us back. We are going to move on to Item 9D, and I'll ask our city clerk to please announce this item.
Consideration of and finding to continue the state of local emergency relating to public safety staffing and update on actions taken to date.
Great, thank you. And we'll go ahead and ask Manny to start our public comment clock. Again, we're welcome to public comments in person and online, and we will take those after our presentation. We have Chief Todd here, and I'll let you go ahead with the presentation. Thanks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening. City Council, Jason Todd, Vallejo Chief of Police tonight. I'm going to provide you with updated staffing numbers for our police departments, our public safety staffing emergency update. So this slide depicts our staffing. This is at the conclusion of each year. So you can see from 2005 all the way to 2024, kind of ebbs and flows. Just bringing your attention to 2020 is when we started to see a decline, you know, each year thereafter. In 2023, we also experienced projections of more egress. And so in 2024, you can see somewhat of a rebound, and our current numbers right now, which we'll get to, is 79. So you'll see conclusion of 2023 at 72. Last year, we ended at 76, and currently we're at 79. This slide talked about some of our mitigating strategies on some adjustments we made during the staffing shortages. So we looked first at Phase One to consider a service model reduction plan. Stage Two, talked about rotating officers to fill vacant patrol staffs, staff shifts. So we rotated officers from non-p patrol units, primarily traffic, as well as our detectives, back into filling those, those empty patrol slots. Currently, we are in Phase Two right now. We were previously in Phase Three, where we used our detectives and we actually flattened out our traffic unit. But since then, we were able to restore some traffic, officers back into traffic. And then Stage Four is the modification of the patrol shifts, which we never needed to, to go that direction. So it does not look like we will be heading, we're pretty flat right now, so it's not looking like we're going to ever need to get to Phase Four. This slide talks about some of the modest kind of returns that we've had. So we had a contract resolution back in, I believe, the end of 2023, which helped stabilize our staffing. By July of 2025, we're expecting to also bring back more traffic unit officers. Traffic is still a major concern in our city. We're hoping to also bring back a federal task force officer. That task force officer would work with primarily FBI and ATF. As you guys know, recently, there was a FBI ATF investigation, a long-term investigation that yielded to pretty significant arrests of a couple of crime syndicates. So we would like to try to reconstitute that position. And in the summertime, we're hoping to develop a problem-oriented policing team. So our hope right now with the projection is that we're going to be able to assign four full-time officers and one full-time sergeant to address crime problems as well as quality of life concerns. We've increased our number of police assistants, and so as you guys know, in October last year, we were able to assign a full-time police assistant to deal with some of the vehicle abatement issues that we've had. So since that time, we started with a list of over 4,000 vehicles. We're down to about 2,000. So a lot of it were duplicated, but in speaking with her just recently, she is really doing a good job. We do have some supply chain issues with the ability to actually impound some of those vehicles and keep them for the lean process, but we are making pretty good headway in vehicle abatement. Next slide. This here is a projection. This is with a plus seven projection. So the blue columns that you're looking at for April of 2025 indicates where we are right now. So we have about, it's a little bit fuzzy, but 78, but we're right around 79. Total sworn officers, we have 43 in patrol, and we have three in FTO. So FTO is Field Training Program. So when those officers successfully complete field training, they will then add, they'll be added to our complement in patrol and, of course, added to our total sworn complement. If you look at the next color-coded orange to the right of the, the blue columns, you'll see that our projection for July of 2025 is 83, with 40 in patrol and five in field training. So if you look at the very top, you can see where we intend to add officers. So that would be in July, adding one traffic, one task force officer, and four pop team members. So the, the projection goes on into July of 2029. Next slide. This graph indicates where we anticipate if, if and when we adopt our recruitment retention program. So right now, I had mentioned, we have a modest, and I think a very conservative number of plus seven to our recruitment. That's total net for the end of the year. We do believe that with the recruitment incentive program, which has enough funding for 15 laterals, we're hoping to add five laterals to each one of those years. So 2026, we're looking at hopefully finishing the year at 91. 2027, finishing the year at 103 total sworn, and then 2028, 115. This slide is just a comparison between the last reporting that I had made back in February to current numbers. So you can see our total sworn currently is 79. We have two officers unmodified. That's where they're injured, but it's not long-term injuries, so we expect them to come back full duty at some point. We have two on workers' comp. This can be permanent or it can be temporary. I believe these two are permanent workers' comp, so at some point, they will likely be retired out. That brings us to a full sworn working duty, 75 out of the 79. Officers' working patrol are 42. Supervisors' working patrol, which are sergeants, is five. Currently, we do not anticipate any officers planning to resign. We have 14 potential officers in background, so hopefully we'll get the majority of those through background positively. These are options being explored currently. So we talked about previously Senate Bill 1379, which allowed the county to have an exemption for the retired and new tenant program. This would allow the sheriff to upstaff up to 20 retired renewitants for a period of three years, which would sunset in January of 2027. We still are currently receiving and very grateful for receiving help from the California Highway Patrol. They are performing traffic enforcement in our surface streets when they have free patrol time, and we are also conducting additional sideshow details monthly. We're looking to expand our security guard program. We've drafted a proposal. Right now, I believe it's sitting with Cal DOJ, so we have to just work with our partners at Cal DOJ just to de-conflict any issues that may conflict with our stipulated agreement. We have in the works a retention recruitment program. The last update that I had received was there were two questions that needed to be answered for the union that had asked a couple of questions that we had not answered. We believe that we're going to get those answered this week, and we're hopeful that that discussion can be very quick thereafter with the union. And of course, we're looking to expand technology where it, it looks helpful. I know that we've been talking with the SAB about potentially a red light camera program. We are still using and been very successful with the license plate reader technology, and we're still in the beta test phase for the auditory detection, otherwise known as the gunshot detection program. We have a peer visit with another agency down south, and so they have a violence intervention program that we would like to look at. I believe there's going to be the ability for two council persons to accompany us while we do this site visit. They do have a couple of other technological programs that we may also be able to get a demonstration for. One is their drone as the first responder program. This is kind of the first step into a, it's called a crime center or a watch center. So that's where you integrate cameras from either ALPR surveillance cameras throughout the city and a drone, and this allows for a little bit quicker response, but also a lot better safety and more intelligence gathering before officers arrive at some of these scenes. And then they also have a program called Live 911, which I would like to see how that functions. Essentially, what the Live 911 technology allows is for the officers to actually hear the 911 calls real time. So there is less delay in the relay of that information from the caller to the dispatcher and then to the officer. Sometimes they don't get all the information to them as quick as possible, or there could be some details, relevant details, that are inadvertently left out when that transfer occurs. So in closing, today, we're looking for council's consideration and finding to continue to declare a state of local emergency due to ongoing public safety staffing challenges. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Do we have any public commenters that have signed up for this item?
None in person.
All right.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We do have one speaker online.
All right. Councilmember Matias, do you want to ask a question now, or you want to go after the speaker? Let's go ahead and invite that online speaker.
Ann C., go right ahead.
Hi, council. Thank you. This is Anne Carr. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Hello? That was the yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so I am discouraged about the security guard contract, which still seems to be in limbo, and I have some specific requests, and that is, for these contracts that seem to go into some sort of Bermuda Triangle, can we have in the staff report updates an indication of when the contract was received? And then secondarily, what was the last date action was taken? So I listened to Chief Todd tonight, and he said that the contract right now is with Cal DOJ. I don't believe that council has ever received a budget request with this contract, or if you guys have, I missed it. And this is an issue, these sort of limbo contracts, Bermuda Triangle contracts, is also an issue with the navigation center and whatever is going on with that in terms of getting an operator signed up and going already. So instead of having this always be 30 to 60 days out from whenever you ask about it, can we start getting some dates on, on paper so that it's, we can surface how long it's been that something has just been, I don't know, put on the shelf or something like that? And I would say either do that or start getting some better excuses. So for example, you know, the dog ate my contract. The contract is in the mail, or it's not a bug, it's a feature. You know, there's lots of lies you could start youing. So let's, let's start making it a little more entertaining than we're working on it and we've been working on it for, oh, I don't know, a year and a half, something like that. Clearly, urgency is felt very differently by those of us who live with some of the situations we want the city to take action on versus those who helicopter in and then go home. So please start putting some dates down and let's surface how long these things are taking, because it's just too damn long. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, Councilmember Matias, or were there any other speakers?
None at this time.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment and move to Councilmember Matias.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chief, for the presentation and the update. So just following up on Ms. Carr's question, where are we with the security guard contract? And can you give us a specific timeline for deployment?
Chief, do you want me to take that one, or?
Yeah, if you can help with timeline.
Happy to do so for you. So the contract has been, so as council knows, this contract had to go out to bid. I can't give you the bid dates because I don't know them. That was run out of the city manager's office. The contract came to us to review, edit, and push out, given comments that we had received kind of across the board from various input points. We did that. It was sent over for comment. We've received those comments. We've made those changes. Actually, Chief, you have the contract at this point to review the comments. It was sent over to you in the last, I'm going to say, few days. It is pretty close to complete, and then it will come forward to this council. I'll have to look to the city manager as to when we can bring it forward for the approval of the contract and the vegetarian action.
The last time the chief was here, you guys told me or shared with us a very similar update. You got to get this done. I don't know what is going on, but you got to get this done, and you got to get it done fast, because we keep getting comments from, you know, the community and from our, more specifically, from our business community. I mean, you guys have seen some of the email traffic that has flowed through, and so I don't know what the holdup is, but you got to prioritize this contract and make sure those folks are, are getting deployed ahead of the summer months. So that's number one. Number two, Chief, and I think the city attorney will have to chime in on this one. In the staff report that I reviewed, it said that council had directed staff to proceed with a verified response ordinance and protocol and that the ordinance had not been updated. So for us nobodies, can you educate us on what this verified response ordinance and protocol is, and can you guys explain to us why that has not been updated, since it's, I guess it's something you need?
Yeah, I don't have the dates in front of me, but I can talk to the program- Yeah, I don't have the dates in front of me, but I can talk to the program. So we did an extensive review of verified response program. In other cities, they looked at some of the calls for service, and one of the calls for service is, a large number of the calls for service are for alarm activations. Alarm activations are just simply what they're called. They're an activation. In the study that we did, we did two actual empirical studies, and I don't have the numbers in front of me, but a very high majority of those activations turned out to be false alarms. And so we proposed during that time that we look at a verified response model. So that would mean that, and the best way I can give you an example is, is that if somebody were to sell you an alarm device, what sometimes happens is they sell you this device and they sell you a service to go with it. Well, that service happens to be police response. Some cities, they can control how many alarm systems they have. They have permitting systems. They have annual fees. They have a fee structure that covers some of the costs associated to that response because it does take time for officers to go there and respond to these calls. And if it's a false alarm, there is some cost recovery mechanism, but it's very marginal. So the study really looked to see specifically what the rate of false alarms were here in our city, which was a very high volume, and the verified program was to suggest that we looked to adopt a model where we would respond to verified alarms. An example of a verified alarm could be where an alarm activation goes off and it has other features with it. It could have a glass breakage sensor. It could have interior motion. It could have interior surveillance, live feed. All those would allow us to evaluate whether or not there's a high degree of certainty this is actually a legitimate break-in and potentially an in-progress break-in, which would then elevate this to a priority one. Another example of what a verified alarm could be is that if an alarm goes off and there's also a caller at the same time calling in saying, I see this residence or this business, 123 Elm Street, being broken into, coupled with an activation, that's a pretty good indicator that that is not a false alarm. So we look to see if potentially we could reduce some of our call volume and not respond to some calls with a high degree of false alarms to then allow our officers to have that free time to then respond to other calls. So that went through, I believe, two public meetings. We met multiple times with the alarm representatives as well, and then it went back to council for direction. So at that time, council directed to move forward with a ordinance, and then I think that's where it stopped.
Okay. So I guess my follow-up is if council provided direction, like, why haven't we seen that ordinance, or why didn't the previous council see that ordinance and that protocol for adoption?
I don't remember it exactly the same way the chief does, so I'd have to go back and look at that. At the time, and I don't know what's happening now, no responses to alarms were being given anyway. So the question is, did we need to adopt an ordinance to say we wouldn't be responding unless they were verified when we weren't responding at all? And that came up during the discussion. I can go back and listen to the tape and give you a report as to where we are. It's essentially written. It's an ordinance that is taken from another city's ordinance. But in terms of bringing it back before the council for adoption, we certainly can do that. We heard a lot of, I will call it opposition and discussion about, well, if you do it now, then you have to undo it when you go to give additional response, and there isn't any necessity to adopt an ordinance that says we're only going to respond to verified responses if we're currently not responding to any alarm calls. Now, having, Councilmember Braganzer is shaking his head, yes, that that was his recollection as well. Again, if this council wants to consider that ordinance, we can bring it forward relatively quickly, but at the point at which the council considered it before, there were still remaining questions as to whether it was a necessity, is my recollection. But I'm happy to go back and listen to the tape.
But even though, sorry, I'm sorry, Mayor. Even though this, even though those concerns were raised, the direction you did receive from council was to get the ordinance going, right, and the protocol?
I don't, I'm not going to represent that I have an independent recollection of that. I'm happy to go back and listen to it. Councilmember, I think we don't really, I don't recall Councilmember Braganzer saying. He doesn't recall. Again, I'm happy to go back and listen to the tape and bring it back if that's the case.
And Chief, would you still find value in getting this through since it was in your report?
I believe there is value. We do go. I mean, granted, we go hours and sometimes days later, which seems commonsensically just not very relevant, but I mean, to clear the queue out, we eventually go at some point. So is it in a reasonable amount of time where it really kind of makes a difference in the moment? No. However, I do have in my notes the date of that, of that meeting, so I can provide that. And then I do have the tremendous amount of work that staff put into the research for it, so I can, I'm happy to share that with this council as well.
Yeah. My last comment on that would just be since, if it is true that if you go back and you do the research and you see that this was direction provided, I think we should be reviewing that as a council, especially considering the sheriff conversation we're having, the fact that we're trying to upstaff his department. He needs tools to be able to respond to calls, and so I think that this ordinance would be a tool, whether or not people in the public agrees or disagrees with whether the council did provide direction, and so I think we should consider that, especially ahead of the summer months. So that's all I got. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Paul Maris.
Thank you for your presentation, Chief. Part of our settlement agreement is that VPD is going to establish an award or awards for any officers who did something related to police reform, like, say, de-escalation. Is that correct?
Correct.
Are you anticipating that award will be given out anytime soon, or has it already happened?
Our award ceremony, I think, is slated for the summertime. I don't have the exact date in front of me, but we have the date already selected, and it should be awarded this year.
Okay, sure. Are, is city council invited to that?
You guys will be, yeah. We haven't finalized everything yet, but.
Oh, yeah. I guess I missed last year then. I'm sorry. Well, yeah, I'd like to emphasize that, you know, we should be present and, you know, really recognize those folks who've done excellent work, provided excellent leadership for the community, especially for that particular award. I mean, there's only so much we can do from behind the dais, but the very least we can do is just be there and be present. And I think I mentioned this before, but any opportunities for us as council members to meet and greet the officers, recognize them for anything, really. Like, I would love to be there. Just, you know, these things help. Is there anything else that you hear from as far as the officers that, you know, we could tend to, just from a cultural perspective? Is anything we could help out just to make sure that we're retaining them?
I think you guys are very fair and professional, and so I, there's nothing I can think of currently. It's just, I think, sometimes morale, because it's fragile. You guys know that day-to-day working conditions really do affect morale, so when you come to work and you're just overloaded from the beginning all the way to the end, it can be very, very tough to deal with. And if you get held over or you get called in and on your day off, that can affect also. So I think moving anything forward that we can to help increase recruitment, I think, would be the main ask. And, you know, right now, we're building, but it's somewhat slow. And so getting some potentially additional help as we're rebuilding will also decrease that amount of workload. And there have been some officers in the past that have left or expressed concern for their own personal safety when they're responding to the calls, especially critical calls, and there are very few officers available. So in those instances, if we need help, we will pause, and we will get help from some of the nearby agencies, which we do. But it would be, it would be very helpful if anything you guys can do to move forward with anything that could create a better recruitment incentive or retention incentive would be, I think, much appreciated.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Councilmember Matulak.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And through the Vice Mayor and now Mayor, that's returned. Thank you, Chief Todd, for that presentation and to Councilmember Palmaris. I did attend the last one, and I believe you actually did a drive-by and actually showed up too. This was over at the car on Sonoma. If I recall correctly, unless I'm recalling a different event that you had attended for a police function.
[laughing]
But to that, if I could ask Manny to put up the, bring up the slide for the, I know Chief Todd highlighted the staffing projections. If you can go to that particular slide, I believe that's, I believe that's the one. And so I'm looking at the July, is it July? I'm looking at July, is it 2027 where you've put, you've included there three potential SROs, and for those in the public, that's school resource officers? So the fact that I'm, the fact I work for the school district and we're, and you've presented that to the school district in the past, so I just wanted to highlight that is that is a, once again, number one, commend you on the, the effort you're making to not only retain, but hopefully to recruit officers to where we're able to get these, to these projections. And for those three SROs, was the intention for that to be at each of the potential, the high schools and through the school district, or was that, or that's to be determined still?
To be determined still, and we may phase that. So we have one, we may have one SRO covering all the schools as needed. Once we have three, if it makes more sense to post one officer at one location and then the other two at other locations, we can do that as well. But we actually spoke recently with the superintendent and the assistant superintendent, and there is somewhat of a match. They help us with some of the costs of those SROs, and so we're already working on how that's going to look. So we'll work with them. I think it actually is going to come up at the next two-by-two meeting discussion, so we have plenty of time to plan that out. So we haven't predetermined that yet. They're very excited to get some SROs back into the system, and I do think that once we do have that, we'll see call volume also decrease. So there are a lot of, a lot of challenges, you know, right now when there is not a consistent presence at the schools, and so having that and having that positive platform to engage with young people on a non-enforcement, daily, consistent basis is also very important.
Very much appreciated. And from the front lines of working at the school district, I know once this became a public, of the projection of that, I mean, the school district was ecstatic, and especially hearing it from the staff and even the students, especially the ones at the high school, they're very much looking forward to SROs coming back. And I think, and I may have missed this one, but could you, could you highlight the fact that there were officers that, the number of officers that did leave but actually did come back? And to me, that speaks to the realization that, to the old saying, is that the grass is not greener on the other side, to where they're realizing that they've been in a good place and maybe kind of was looking for potentially better opportunities when they realized the best opportunity for them was here, staying here in the city of Vallejo.
Yeah, so that egress, we had a pretty sharp egress in 2023, but towards the end of 2023, we had six officers that had formerly went to other agencies.
Yes.
Come back to Vallejo. So we were very helpful, very helpful, because six is almost a full team.
Exactly.
So that pulled us out of phase three and eventually brought us back down to phase two.
And I appreciate that, to speaking to the, to, I know we were talking about the morale or lack thereof, and I think that speaks to, I think, the crew that is here, they're helping to help stabilize that morale, and thank you to your, under your leadership, that that's being able to be projected to increasing numbers over the years. So thank you for that, Chief Todd.
You're welcome.
All right. Councilmember Gordon.
I, first of all, want to say thank you so much for this excellent report. I appreciate that. I'd like to know two things. One, when you hire new officers, I remember back in the day, we would recognize them here, but I haven't seen that in the last year or so. Can we make sure we bring that back to recognize our new officers that are, so our community doesn't see them for the first time here and there, if we can revisit that? And then I just want to say, I do agree that officers' morale needs to know the community supports them, and that's why I was so glad that they came out to South Vallejos. We had a wonderful community event spring into the Wellness, Health, and Resource Fair. I would have to say it was probably six officers came out, and also they were with I Heart, and they were just smiling. The kids were excited to see them. You know, they're getting stickers and things like that, you know, and they're having a great time. So we, as council, at least myself, I'm sure my colleagues do too, would like to be invited to special events, because I remember one time Sergeant Brent Garrett stated that we don't get invited to the birthday parties. We don't get invited to the graduations. And that's serious. You know, he's saying that we, it has to be both ways, you know, and we, so we want to find ways that we can partner with our officers as well. So thank you for that.
Yeah, we have an events calendar that I can share with council, so if you guys would like to attend, you will know full in advance which ones we intend to be at as well.
Thanks. Councilmember Lettu.
Thank you, Chief Todd. We met probably almost six weeks ago, and one of the things that we talked about is safe passage. And I'd like to know what has been, what has come of that conversation, or what considerations are being thought about to create safe passage for that particular district, Marin, right there where the school is and the churches, that before school, for a certain period of time, there's a patrol car patrolling so that we're not having our children and families aren't being faced with different type of unwanted activity as well as after-school hours. So I just would like to know where we are and the possibility of a patrol car being present.
Yeah, so I'll just kind of, just explain to the rest of the council and some of the public listening what safe passage is. So it's a program where we have a starting point, and then we end at an ending point, and it's usually a school. So we'll start at one point, and then we'll walk with the children to the school. During that walk, it would be supported by staff from Vallejo Police Department, and of course, staff from the school and any volunteers, city council, anyone else would like to participate. So we, after that discussion with you, we, internally, we talked about it. We think we can do something that can integrate Sergeant Hollis, which is our community engagement sergeant, as well as potentially our I Heart folks. Even though they don't have a police vehicle, they have a vehicle that has the amber lights, which creates a little bit of caution, you know, and attention. Usually, the programs will have volunteers wearing something very distinctive. It could be a reflective vest, or it could be something kind of uniformed to show some unity and just really create a sense of awareness, you know, of what's going on and showing that we support the children, of course. So we talked about logistically how we would support it. I do believe we can. Now, we just kind of figure out where we're going to do it. So we want it to be kind of equitable, you know, for the city and the council members. So we, I'll kind of float the idea through the city manager. Maybe we'll get some of your requests. We may not be able to do one in every district every month, but I think if we were to every month, but I think if we were to split it up into the different districts and different schools, it can be very rewarding for not only the children but our officers. So I think we have a plan in place logistically to do maybe one or maybe two a month. Of course, on the weekdays is when the school is in session and we have a very short period of time until summer. So I think we're ready for it. We just have to kind of figure out where we're going to do it and who's going to be involved and the date.
And something else that I want to just throw out and give you an opportunity to consider, and I will follow up personally with you, is considering how we can create a community ambassador program. And I have seen that program in action in very key places in the city and county of San Francisco where nonprofit organizations are used. And it is opportunity where individuals who are re-entering into our communities and so forth and on have an opportunity to be hired, go through all the necessary background checks. But it really does create also a different level of safe passage for community members and really helps tamp down potential illegal activities and so forth and on. And I'll have further discussion with you about that. And that doesn't always necessarily mean that it needs to be a police officer, and it has worked very well. And so I would like for you to take the time to kind of explore that thought process. And I will again make time to meet with you in this coming month to have further discussion about how does that look? Because we're talking about hiring security guards and different things like that for varying reasons, but there are ways where we can have community ambassadors, where we can offer employment to our community while also creating culturally competency on the streets and helping us in very different ways.
Thank you. So I have Councilmember Matulak and Councilmember Gordon for second round, which I'm hoping can be quick. And I want to steer us back to the state of emergency itself. I personally would love to see, and I think we, I mentioned it the, the last time, and I'd love to see this for the June, which I think will be our next update. I want us to start having a conversation about our exit strategy with this. We can't be in a state of emergency forever. And I think there's two potential metrics that we could use. One would be the staffing level, one would be the response time. So is there a goal? And this can be, this is something I'm kind of asking of, you know, VPD and the city managers to, can you come back next time with a, hey, this is the level of response time, or this is the level of staffing at which we would be comfortable ending the state of emergency? And obviously, the conversation we're going to have with the sheriff's contract could also potentially give us a end to the state of emergency, bringing on the sheriff. But I would love to at least have a plan of what we're tracking and how we're moving with respect to those metrics, as you're already doing with the staffing. We already kind of are seeing how we're moving along that metric. Maybe we add response time to that and then set some soft goals of what we'd like to see. I also wanted to add one quick comment on the security guard piece, which is that, I mean, personally, I've had some conversations with businesses that, or, or bigger kind of developments where they do have security guards, but their security guards end up not being effective because they can only be as effective as calling the police and getting a police response. If they apprehend somebody or identify somebody, but they can't get a police out, there's no point in having that security guard. So I think that is a conversation we should have of, do we want to go forward with security guards because it's expedient, or is there somewhere we think they would be effective? Or do we want to put those funds into the sheriff contract, which will provide us with personnel that can respond to calls for service and actually alleviate when we have private entities that have security guards that are making calls for service, can respond to those calls of service? So I'm putting that out there as well for something for us to consider when we consider that contract. With that, or go ahead, Chief.
Yeah, that's a good point, Mayor, but I think sometimes the absence of data is hard to kind of quantify as well. So we all hear about the events. I just had one a couple of weeks ago at a, at a hotel where there was an unruly customer in there that just did not listen to anything the security guard had to say, and the deterrence value of that guard was zero. So it still required a police response. However, there are other instances that I think we cannot track that those security guards, their mere presence themselves averts some criminal activity. And most of the time, and I'm just talking in generalities, most of the time perpetrators that are, that commit property crimes generally don't like to be seen doing, doing those break-ins or thefts. And so having somebody there diligently watching that property or patrolling that area deters that activity from occurring. That's hard to really gauge unless we deploy them in an area where we have data to show what it was like before and of course, data to show what it was like after deployment.
And I appreciate that because I think that's the calculation we'll have to make. I mean, obviously, in a perfect world, we do all of the above. But given our limited resources, let's think about where, where we want to put it. Because I think there are, there are places in the city that if you were to put a security guard, it would significantly help the situation. And there are places in the city where we have a security guard where they're just like, we need police response. So that's, that's, that's my sort of food for thought for us when we do make those considerations. Councilmember Matulak?
Thank you, Mayor. And I was going to bring up this issue in my council member report, but I thought this might be the more appropriate one, was tomorrow night, we have a, for District Two, we have a neighborhood watch captains meeting. And I know we're trying to expand that program and it's, this goes more towards the proactiveness of I think we're looking to expand to. So I wanted to, to tout that, that we're starting to rebuild that and wanting to grow that. And so, so, and I know Sergeant Hollis reached out to the mayor and I to participate in this. And then I'm hoping to meet that after an STA meeting, but I know the mayor's got a meeting conflicting with that at this point. But I inadvertently sent out an invitation to a lot of the District Two, to where it was, this meeting was intended just for the current captains right now, but, but I know we're trying to recruit and build the program. So for those that in District Two that are interested in becoming neighborhood watch captains, please reach out directly to Sergeant Hollis and he'll walk you through that program of how to do that. So, so please, if you're not a captain, please, due to the limitation of the space that we're going to be at, please reach out to Sergeant Hollis first before showing up and he'll walk you through that. But I look forward to meeting the current neighborhood watch captains and understanding the program and seeing how we can increase that more and hoping to do that across all the districts from that standpoint. And I think that kind of ties to Councilmember Lettigew's about the community engagement of the community ambassador program to where we're expanding, trying to get out in the community and get more community engagement. And then to also to piggyback to Councilmember Lettigew's about the safe passage and the, involving the school, maybe one recommendation is that I know STA and Safe Route School, they have a, it's like a quarterly, or I think it's biannually, a walk, roll and bike to school day. That may be, that may a good, that may be a good cross collaboration between all of these agencies to potentially do this, incorporate the safe passage during that. Because I know in the past, we've had elected members kind of, because I know Supervisor Hannigan would stop by Dan Mini Elementary School to help, help tout that program to where this may be the appropriate place to kind of look at, including the safe passage program. And obviously, this sounds like something we would want to discuss and maybe further elaborate on the two, at the two by two meeting this upcoming month. So thank you for bringing that up. And thank you, Dr. Lettigew, for bringing that up also.
Thanks. Councilmember Gordon?
Yes, I don't want to confuse my district because I do have ambassadors. They'd be like, what? She didn't say we were going to do that. So I have ambassadors that look out for the community and then they replay, report that out to me. So just wanted not to confuse that, okay? But I wanted to ask a question. You're going back to what you had mentioned that my colleague did about safe passage. Is that like where you walk through the design, safe routes through STA that's set up? Or that's just, it doesn't matter where?
Yeah, we can set up our own route. So we'll have a, usually a meeting area where everybody will meet and we'll kind of explain what the process is going to look like and then what the route is. We have some, just obviously some, some parameters that we don't want people to walk in the street and things like that. So we'll go over some of those parameters and then we'll, we'll start from the starting point through the route and then end at the school. And we can do something either at the beginning or at the end, you know, in terms of maybe having some pastries or, or doing some, some swag, you know, for the children. But yeah, we can make it, you know, we can make it whatever we want. We customize it.
I like that because we did this with walk, Ruby Walk to School. So yeah, yeah, that, that sounds really great. We could do that. And if you do, let me know. I would be interested in doing it because we did it for that. And also, one of the students mentioned about having the officers come into their class again to teach them about safe danger, like what, you know, if somebody looked like they're suspicious, what to do. Like when I used to walk, they would have me, they taught us to, you know, cross the street. We can't really teach our little kids that, but you know, but just because you'll never know if someone's following you, but just things like that. And if you're interested, I would be happy to volunteer in that as well.
Yeah, we can, we can talk offline and coordinate that. No problem.
All right. I think we're ready for a motion.
Yes. I move that we approve the continuation of the state of local emergency related to public safety staffing and update on actions taken to date.
And I probably should have said this during the motion, but I'm hoping that we can provide the exit, kind of the, the metrics in the next update. I don't think that needs to be in the resolution, but we're ready to vote if we haven't already.
I am missing one vote.
All right. We're trying to figure out who didn't vote.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you very much. We're going to stick with public safety. We're going to move on to item 9E, and I'll ask City Clerk Abramson to please announce the item.
Adopt a resolution approving funding for a contract with the Solano County Sheriff's Office for Public Safety Officers by providing direction to the city manager to include such funding up to $5,300,000 or other greater amount is directed in each of fiscal year 25, 26, and 26, 27 budgets.
All right. Thank you. And we'll go ahead and start our public comment clock. For anyone wishing to address the council on this item, we'll do our staff presentation and check for quick questions from council, then we'll take our public comment. And Chief Ta, go right ahead. I know we have a presentation on this item.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. I think we may have some, some edits on the motion. So we'll kind of go into more detail. I think, I think some of the numbers, and Director Nahauer is here to help me just kind of work through some of the numbers because this staff report was kind of a group effort. So I'll go through this and then we can cover that in the end. So first slide tonight, we're here to recommend that the council consider adopting a resolution approving contract funding with the Solano County Sheriff's Office to include, I think this number may be inaccurate, but it should total 11.2 million. So.
And can I jump in for clarification? Would you mind clarifying? I know we all know this, but I want to make sure it's clear for the public, that this would be for one calendar year of sheriff service, but it would be split over two fiscal years in terms of budget. And that's why we're looking at two years of budget.
Correct.
So we're not budgeting for two years of service. We're budgeting for one year of service over two fiscal years.
Correct. One, one year of service split into two fiscal years. So essentially, half, half that 11.2 in fiscal year 2025 and the other half in 2026 budgets. And to allow the city manager to begin negotiating terms of the agreement on behalf of the city of Vallejo. So some of the background discussion, we talked about it with the staffing update, but we are experiencing staffing shortages. Local emergency was declared back in summer of 2023. We have improved hiring modestly. However, full staffing at the current rate that we're projecting may take several years. The contract enhances public safety for the duration of the contract. And the sheriff patrols would complement our current Vallejo Police Department patrol officers through the periods of 12 noon to midnight. So 1,200 hours to 2,400 hours. I'm going to run through this slide deck and then I'm going to revisit the staff report, which really has the 12 questions. So the 12 questions that we're going to answer tonight were raised for the sheriff. It includes data sharing questions and statistical gathering, assigning personnel issues, policy considerations, bargaining responsibilities with both their labor union, which is the DSA, and our labor union, which is the VPOA, the cost, logistics for deployment, and then payment terms. Other questions are concerning risk and the proposed that the county assumes liability for any willful misconduct of the duties while working in Vallejo and the estimated cost of liability. Right now, it's looking that the numbers for liability reserves is approximately 574,000 and the cost for litigation defense is about 300,000. And it also talks to some, some answers towards fiscal impact. So again, we're looking at one year with the sheriff, which would be approximately 11.2 million. Director Nahauer is going to help me talk about some of the budget actuals compared to the, the budget numbers for fiscal year 22, 23, and 23, 24, possible funding sources for the sheriff contract, which could be general fund, Measure P, or other budget reductions or cuts. And then what this would mean for potentially overtime savings. So it's estimated that we would save anywhere between 4,151 hours to potentially 6,642 hours. Because there's different ranks, it was very difficult to really pin a dollar amount to it. So we, we put it in the metrics of hours. So then I'm going to go through the staff report, if you have that in front of you. I'm just going to summarize it for brevity of time. So first question was, just to confirm that in addition to the contract agreement, how many sheriff's deputies are working currently in our city? So in the unincorporate areas, and thank you, Councilmember Gordon, for sharing, sharing with me the map, but there are several areas of unincorporated jurisdiction within our city, and those areas are staffed by two deputies. So those two deputies are responsible for those areas. So if it's in one certain area, typically, those two deputies will be dispatched to address that issue. If it's in another area, they'll travel to the other area and handle it accordingly. So they work two 12-hour shifts that provide 24/7 coverage. So two deputies will work in the first half of the day and two other deputies will work in the second half of the day, seven days a week. Second question is bargaining responsibilities and timeline from the sheriff's side. So the sheriff will meet and confer with their deputy sheriff's association, which is DSA. The timing of the meet and confer will depend on the progression of the city and county discussions prior to entering into a contract with the city. So any potential contract, in their opinion, is subject to the completion of a meet and confer process. So they will be engaging in a meet and confer. Next question is the estimated one-time cost. Their response was when the city of Vallejo is agreeable to all of the contract terms and conditions, the county will initiate a study for the one-time costs for dispatch and communications dispatching. So when they talk about patching, then we, we have this term, and I don't know the technical definition of it, but basically, when we patch, then the communications either in the computed, computer-aided dispatch will then be sent over to their onboard dispatching and also some of the, the 911 calls and things are transferred over. So that is talking about some of the patch. And the next question is if we do not have the full amount, can we develop an alternative model, particularly if we give specific amount of what we can afford? So their response was no, that the sheriff's office has developed a comprehensive constitutional policing model. a comprehensive constitutional policing model to support the Vallejo Police Department to meet, to meet our emergencies, to meet theirs and our emergency staffing needs. The next question is in terms of operation of deployment, as the sheriff staffing, uh, I'm sorry, as the sheriff is staffing up, could it be staggered or phased in? So that, I think this question was where, uh, because they had to hire 20 retired annuitants and the plan is to place those retired annuitants in either the courtroom or into the jails and then bring those deputies out. So there will be some time to train up those retired annuitants for that role before they can be, um, those other deputies can be used, uh, for Vallejo. So their response was that, uh, they could not do this. Uh, this model that they recommend does not allow for phasing in of services. The startup costs and the labor commitment is subject to a six-month preparation period to meet the terms of the contract. The initiation of services is subject to the county's ability to onboard the staffing required for this contract. Next question is what is the lead time needed to order vehicles? And do we need to start this now? The response from the sheriff was that the ordering of these vehicles should occur as soon as possible and is contingent on the receipt of startup funding from the city. The delivery and upfitting of those patrol vehicles for service is estimated to be six months. Next question is what would be the payment terms of the contract? Their response is the city shall pay the startup cost, liability costs, reserve and insurance costs upfront. Startup costs are estimated to be approximately 1.4 million. Liability, reserve and insurance costs are estimated to be approximately 1.9 million. And the city would then pay the annual base costs on a monthly basis. Next question is where did last year's VPD budget go compared to budget and actuals and staffing budgeted? I think I got a little bit cut off. So this is, I'm going to hand this maybe over to you. So this question is really essentially asking about, uh, last year's budget.
And the table that we provided in the staff report, uh, was, uh, it's a condensed version, but basically it's for 23, 24 and 22, 23. In 23, 24, the savings was not as high as it was in 22, 23. So in 23, 24, the four million savings is what the city had used to balance the budget. And this was a PD portion of it. In 22, 23, we had a much higher savings. And so that was broken out into, um, the two million that we have set aside for the retention bonus was from that savings. There was also two million set aside for the VPOA, um, MOU that was being negotiated at that time. Um, 750 was set aside for the DOJ stipulated agreement. And we have that and from the, it's from that that we are constantly paying their invoices. And then there was, uh, 2.9 that was the basic salary savings, which was again, used in the budget to balance the budget. So that in gist is the two. If you want, like me to go into further details, I can dig in.
Uh, next question is how much can we expect to save from overtime? So, um, we looked at the period of March 1 of 2024 to the end of February of 2025. During that period, we accumulated one, 16,607 hours of overtime. And so we estimate that we could save in overtime anywhere between 25 to 40%. And the reason why, uh, this estimation is not basically split in half because of the 12 hours that they'll be covering is they will be providing coverage for four beats and then we will be providing for coverage in the other four beats. Sometimes we would go out with less than eight officers. So we would not have on a single shift, every single shift, eight officers per shift. Sometimes we would go out with four, sometimes we would go out with six to cover eight beats. So when we estimate overtime savings, if we are able to staff four beats that we are covering, when the sheriff is helping us, that would be ideal. People that live in that beat would then have their own officer to respond, not only to calls for service in that area, but also that officer's responsibility would be to do any type of visible or, or enforcement patrols in that area to reduce call volume. So our estimation is anywhere between 20 and 40% overtime savings. So that amounts out to anywhere between 4,151 hours to 6,642 hours per year. Risk concerns, so this is, uh, discussing liability costs. So it is not possible to forecast the impact of liability and litigation with all certainty. It is reasonable to anticipate that the sheriff's deputies patrolling in our area will, uh, have significant higher volume of criminal activity and potentially violent crime activity. This would generate liability claims of a similar rate in nature as the Vallejo Police Department's experience during patrolling the same areas. Based on the numbers of deputies and sergeants that would be patrolling within the city of Vallejo under the contract, the sheriff's office recommends approximately 574,000 be budgeted towards annual, annually for liability payments and 300,000 for expenses associated with litigation defense. Insurance and risk, so according to the term sheet provided by the sheriff in December of 2024, the estimated subtotal for insurance and liability costs is approximately 1.9 million. This amount includes 500,000 for administrative costs, 57,700 for workers' compensation premiums, 375,000 for insurance costs and 1 million set aside as reserved to cover any disputed indemnity, indemnity cost. The next question is what are the bargaining responsibilities and timelines? This is similar to what was asked of the sheriff's office with respect to their DSA. So same response, we're going to also meet and confer with our Vallejo Police Officers Association. Because this does constitute a change in working conditions, the timeline and agreement for this discussion is difficult to estimate until both unions express what their concerns are. So it's hard to predict. Uh, this question is whether or not we can facilitate, uh, a conversation with the sheriff and city council. The sheriff is awaiting further direction from the county board of supervisors and the county administrator for further direction before entering contract negotiations. The department, the Vallejo Police Department can facilitate a meeting with the sheriff and council members once the sheriff has been authorized to discuss the contract in greater detail. And then I'm going to move back to the PowerPoint presentation, slide seven. I included this slide here just to give you all a general guideline on estimated timeline. So the first bullet point is here tonight. So if we're going to hopefully receive, uh, direction from you all to either approve funding and allow the city manager to begin negotiating terms for a contract with the sheriff's office. The next bullet point is consideration and approval by the county board of supervisors. This may take about a month to get that scheduled, put in front of the county board of supervisors and decided on. So that could take us into mid-May. We're in April, so mid-May. Meet and confer discussions with the DSA and the VPOA. Um, I'm estimating this to take anywhere between one and two months, as I had stated earlier, until we really sit down and discuss what their concerns are. Uh, it's hard to really predict the timeline on that. So I'm, it's an aggressive estimation, but I'm thinking one to two months. So that will bring us to May to June. Order and outfit emergency vehicles. The sheriff's office is taking about six months on our side. Our, based on supply chain and, uh, availability of the contractor to build up all the emergency equipment. Uh, you have to put a confinement area in the back of the car. We have to outfit it with the computers and all the cameras. Uh, I'm estimating this to be anywhere between six and nine months. So that will take us to January or to March of 2025. And then at the same time, during the same period, the sheriff's office would hire, train, outfit their deputies with necessary equipment. So that would be overlapping time period of six to nine months. Again, that would take us to January to March. So the implementation, if we move forward tonight, we're looking at January 2026, January to March of 2026. And this Senate bill sunsets in January of 2027. So last slide, Manny. So in conclusion, uh, we are hoping to receive direction tonight from the city council to approve funding for the contract with the Solano County Sheriff's Office. Looking for approval to allow the city manager to begin negotiating terms of the agreement on the, on behalf of the city of Vallejo. And lastly, we're going to emphasize our commitment on continuing to improve Vallejo PD sworn staff during the time that this contract would be in place. And with that, I can, uh, answer questions.
All right, thank you. Um, do we have any public commenters on this item?
No in-house public comment.
How about online?
We do have one online.
Okay. So what I'll say, I'm not seeing any lights right now. So let's go ahead and take that commenter and we'll close public comment after that. And I'll encourage us, there's so much discussion we could have on this. I think I'm going to try to keep us as focused as possible on the task at hand, which is deciding whether we want to direct the funding allocation. And then there's clearly going to be a ton more logistics we're going to have to work out if we move forward. Um, but I'm going to try to kind of streamline our discussion into, into that, that focus. Um, so let's go ahead and call the commenter.
Ann Carr, go right ahead.
Hi, you guys. Sorry to be your only, uh, audience member who's, uh, participating tonight. On this contract, I just want to understand, verify that I understand correctly. So the decision tonight is around an allocation for half of the contract or half of the allocation needed. The other half, I guess, would need to come through the next year's fiscal budget. And then, um, I guess, um, meet and confer needs to happen with the unions. It needs to be approved by the soups. To, so then to fast forward to the bottom line of what is the earliest somebody in Vallejo could see people on the street. Um, the slide had said something about a training period, January through March of 2026. So then training happens and then in best case scenario, you're looking at literally a year from now before somebody's on the street. And that's best case scenario. So the reason I want clarification around some of these dates is it goes back to some of my urgency around security guards. In the meantime, the security guards are obviously, you know, not full-fledged officers. They won't have guns, but they are meant as a deterrent. And particularly in, uh, high-traffic commercial areas where we've had so much of a problem with burglaries and where businesses report that customers don't feel comfortable shopping there, which directly impacts our revenue stream and our ability to afford things, not to mention quality of life. So, um, can we confirm what the best case scenario, worst case scenario is on getting people on the street? And then that ought to fold into perhaps a higher level of urgency around the security guards. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Has anyone else raised their hand? All right, questions from council, Vice Mayor Brigenzar.
Hi, thank you for the presentation. Um, I, I have just a few questions and it mostly revolves around, you said there were savings of overtime hours, the 4,000 to 6,600 hours of overtime. Um, and I guess, help me understand, because that means that if we save that amount of overtime, if we're only staffing for the four beats, then this 11.2 million dollars that we're going to spend is going to give us no level, no higher level of service if you're cutting out overtime. Is that, am I missing something there?
I'm, I'm making sure I understand the question. So the overtime savings would, um, let, let's say we had six officers instead of four. We, we don't need six because we would only be covering four beats. We could staff it with six, but if we're able to save those two officers overtime hours by only staffing it with four beats, because we know these other four beats are covered by the sheriff's office, then that could amount, that could amount to some savings.
But I guess my question is, wouldn't it be better? I mean, the community is not going to see any additional response, like speedier response times or anything, because you're just going to be staffing for where we basically are now. In other words, the, the sheriff's office isn't going to be supplementing us. They're going to be, just be taking over a portion and giving, uh, so the, the citizens will see the same amount of service that they have now. I, for 11 million dollars more.
Yeah, I think the service level would be quicker because they, they would be more responsive. They would have at least one deputy for every beat in, in their area of responsibility. And then we would have one officer in every beat for hours. So whereas if you had four for eight beats, obviously the, the service would be elongated.
Okay, maybe, maybe I'm not being clear, but that's okay. So, um, I just, I have concerns about funding this through saved, savings on overtime because I, I don't feel that, that we're going to give the level of service, any more level of service than we already giving, uh, based on your comments. And then I do also have concerns about the, the same thing that the, the speakers rose with the implementation date of January to March, which means that could be even pushed out further. So we would even have less than a year of, of contract service. Is there any way that we can speed the, I know that we talked about this and the sheriff said no, but is there any way that we can speedline this? I don't understand why, I think Councilmember, uh, Matthias brought up the phasing and that if they have five officers that come on this month, why can't we let them come on and, uh, and, and start that practice versus waiting until they have all 20 before they can start this contract?
Yeah, and I, I can only reiterate their response.
Sure.
But the, the bulk of the time really is hiring those, those 20 employees, getting them trained to do the function that they would be doing in the sheriff's department. And then bringing those officers, or I'm sorry, those deputies over to us. So half of the staff would be half of the week, the other staff would be the other half of the week. So, um, if, if you needed to staff both sides of the week and you only had half your complement, then you'd only be staffing a quarter of the staff, you know, throughout the, when you split it.
But so the, so when they hire the deputy that gets hired day one and they have to wait the six months while the others are being hired, is the sheriff paying for those salaries before they come to the city? Or they, are we paying for those salaries once they're hired?
I would, I would say that the sheriff, if they're not coming and working in Vallejo, we're not paying for them.
Okay.
So if they're not going to deploy them in phases, uh, I, I don't think that we should be charged when they're working over in that other, you know, that other department.
Okay. And then, uh, to Reka, how, it's still not clear to me. I understand that the, the overtime is, is one thing, but is the rest coming from salary savings? Or how are we funding this without going into the reserves? Or are we going into reserves to fund this?
We are recommending it to be taken out of the reserves, yes.
Okay. Interesting, thank you.
If, if I may ask a follow-up question, Chief Ta, to, um, along the lines of a question that Vice Mayor Brigenzar asked. So we're estimating that if we bring the sheriff's, uh, support online, we'd be saving 4,100 to 6,600 hours of overtime, right? I think that's about, um, I think that's, you know, kind of between three and four and a half officers worth of time. So the net increase in our, in patrol would be the 11 sheriff's deputies less the three to four and a half folks that we're not going to be sending out there on overtime. So it would still be a net increase of something like six and a half to eight, uh, officers that would be on the street. So that's, that would be the difference.
Correct, correct.
All right, thanks. Councilmember Matulik.
Thank you, Mayor, and, and thank you for that presentation. So kind of to piggyback on the council, of the vice mayor's. So kind of to piggyback on the vice mayor's, so if, and I'm kind of leaning towards his of, are we seeing an increased service to our community? And if not, so is this amount that we're approving, whether it's the 5.3 over the two years, which is actually 11, over 11 million, and to the comment that we're cutting into reserves, that's a little bit more concerning to me for the fact that if, last number I heard for our reserves is 24 million, so we're going to be cutting into half of, basically almost half of that just for this service? And so I'm just, I'm just wanting to get that clarification and confirmation. So for this five, up to 11 million, is there a, is this is up to or to, up to amount? In other words, do we have a first right of refusal to have our officers work this versus having to spend this money on the sheriffs? Because I mean, if, if we're, because in my mind, if we're not seeing a increased level of service to shorten our recall times, I'm a supporter of having, keeping our money internally to our own officers versus spending it out there if we're not seeing an increased service. But if there is an increased service, so that's a different conversation, but it sounds like it may or may not be based on, because part of that question is, are we refusing overtime to officers with this, if we approve this?
Let me see if I can break that into two separate responses. So I do believe that the community will see an increased level of service. So if there is a deputy or an officer assigned to each beat, so you'll have four Vallejo officers and four deputies working, so you'll have at least eight working plus two supervisors, so that'd be 10 during the time the sheriff is helping us. So the service level should be a noticeable increase. We sometimes have four to six covering the same area. And so I believe you will see a noticeable increase. The second part is that your question to offer our officers overtime, we, we kind of went through the phases, and so, once we get to the point where they're saturated with overtime, now we've got to mandate either detectives or traffic officers to fill in those gaps. So that's, that's what we're avoiding by using the sheriff temporarily.
Thank you for that clarification, because my understanding when this was first brought to us a while back was that we were so saturated with overtime to where we were over-exhausting our officers, to where a lot of them weren't able to take trainings because they couldn't fit into our time because they were doing so much overtime. So I just want to make sure that we're, that this overtime value or number is, that this would benefit that, to help our officers as opposed to not helping the community by having the same level of service. But once again, to, to get to, to, part of this understanding, this is a required step from our part of basically committing the money towards the service, so we can go in front of the board of supervisors, for them to ultimately approve it once the contracts are reviewed. Is that, is that the, in other words, we couldn't even get to this point unless we take this step today to approve some sort of funding for, towards the, towards the sheriff?
Yeah, that's correct. So I believe it has to be approved at some point by you all before it will go in front of the county board of supervisors.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Just want to reiterate that if, if we're not, if the level of service isn't meeting what our expectations are, I would like to keep that money internally for our own officers if we, if we have that. Because I'm, I speak to that for the, for the, and this is me as the glass-half-full type of person, that we're going to have that increased recruitment. If that happens to where we don't, we can cut back some of the sheriffs, are we going to be able to implement something like that? Or are we committed to having to spend this if we commit to this, if we commit to this number and this contract?
I think that's more of a money issue, but I think if we roll this program out, and I'm just talking hypothetically, if we roll it out from January to January, then we commit to spending that 11.2. If we don't get this program off the ground till March, we can only run it to January. So we would not be paying the full amount. We would be short, you know, a couple months from that 11.2 figure.
And do we even have a timeline of when all of this can legit, I mean, what's, I guess the reality of when this would potentially be approved through the board of supervisors to get into the, knowing that we don't really have any, we haven't even had those conversations of the logistics of what the contract is? So it sounded like next year was probably potentially the best-case scenario still.
Yes, that's slide seven. So I gave you that estimated timeline.
Thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Gordon.
If I can see you. So technically, we can just cross out 25 and 26 because just not even going to start possibly until March of 26 to January 27. That's not even a year. Last time I checked, there's 12 months in a year. So we're really only going to be paying for, what, eight months, if that, $11 million for that? The vehicle, is it going to be designed in the police vehicles, or is it going to be designed in the sheriff's vehicle? And then, as I heard someone say, they'll buy it back, but then it's going to be depreciated. So whatever we paid for in the front, it's not going to be part of that. Is 11 million going towards that final, all of that vehicle, you name it? And then we get paid back the vehicle, is it going to be the full amount? No, because I think I heard you saying in the last meeting that it won't be. It would be depreciating. So, I mean, I do have a question, if it's okay with, this is not inappropriate for my previous colleagues, that was, I mean, my colleagues who are currently on now. We declared an emergency in '23, if I'm not mistaken, and then we got this approved through the process. This is now, if I'm not mistaken, two months, two years later, kind of trying to figure out what happened? How come this didn't come into play prior to this? When, when it became an opportunity for us to do that? But because then, it was $6 million, now we've doubled that in less than two years. So, you know, I'm for safety, I'm for everything, and I'm just saddened that our board of supervisors, which we have two, are not helping us find monies to pay for this. Because we asked them, right? I want to make sure, we did ask them, and they said no, according to our representative, because one, this is also benefiting one of our board of supervisors. And so I'm very concerned that we're not getting any financial help. We've spoke about our reservoir money twice tonight. You said we have 24 million. If we take 11 million, we only have 13 million left, and we pretty much spent that. So I'm just kind of concerned here to why the sheriff is not working with us to help with that cost. And they know that we're a city that's not, have a lot of money in the first place, and I'm just really concerned that we're kind of out here figuring this out by ourselves and not having any help from the county. And I, unless someone told me something new, that was the last report that we got, no, we're not helping you out. So we're just, I'm just really concerned about that. Because I know when we ran our campaign, I heard that we're going to get, help you out with resources, we're going to help you with finances. I heard all that stuff, but now we're in a situation that we're needing some help, and we don't seem to get, we're not seeming to get this. I do agree that we need the extra support. I've heard, I spoke to officers, and they're depleted. And I don't know about you, it's almost 10, 11 o'clock, and I can barely think, so can you imagine somebody working double shifts? So I know they need the help. I just, I think we need the help too financially. I wish that when the bill got passed, there was some money that came with it. So we got money to build a park in San Francisco, but we don't have no money to help our, help us out here. So I'm just, I'm just a little bit bothered by that. And everyone says the same thing. We want officers here, we want the sheriffs here, we want to put support here, but $11 million, it feels like we're being pimped. And that's not my word, people. Don't get mad at me, I can show you the text. It just feels like we're being taken advantage of, if that's what, if that makes sense. And, but I do appreciate your transparency and letting us know everything that we need to know, but that costs us a lot. And then to want some of the money upfront, 1.8, like, where we going to go? So it's like, they just, it just feels like I wish I could have the sheriff give me a call and talk to me a little bit more and help, help me understand this, because I definitely need, just to find out how they can help us a little bit off that cost. But if this is where, I think this is the whole point, right, to see if he can negotiate the cost? City manager, or no? What's the part of negotiating, what is this requesting, negotiating what? Just asking.
So the specific purpose of the item tonight is that the county has communicated that it's not, we cannot proceed with them in the negotiations until the city has made a financial commitment. They've invested a lot of time in kind of drafting the service model and the terms of the agreement to this point, and they don't want to invest any additional time until they know that the city is interested in, you know, really seeing this carried forward. And so they've asked the city to make a financial commitment to this arrangement. If the city council does that, and we've proposed a mechanism to do that in the resolution that's before you tonight, if the city council makes that commitment, then the county will, county staff will take this to the board of supervisors to get their blessing of this service model and term sheet, and we can continue to negotiate to hopefully execute an agreement and get these services in place. So the specific intent of tonight's item is to provide the city council with an opportunity to make that financial commitment, to continue this dialogue with the county about this service model.
Thank you for clarifying. I appreciate your help. Thank you.
I can't speak to the cost, but if I can just make a comment, some of the work that the sheriff's office did was getting the assembly bill through the entire legislative process. And part of the delay was because we were waiting for that Senate bill, which if it wasn't approved, we wouldn't even be having the possibility of having this contract. So that Senate bill wasn't approved until, by the governor, until the end of September. And so we really could not move forward until we knew that the Senate bill would allow for the sheriff to be able to hire retired annuitants in this way. And so from basically the end of September to December, December was when the sheriff provided us the term sheet. So that was October, November, and then midway through December, we received that term sheet. So that's the time kind of delay that I think most people didn't realize that we had to wait for. Had the governor or had that Senate bill not passed, we would not even have the possibility of help. So that, we're talking about this six months after September.
Councilmember Matthias.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so I always like to make sure we're talking the same language. So I'm going to ask you this first question. The last presentation you gave, you said, come July, you're going to have, you project to have 83 sworn officers, total sworn, right? About 83? So let's fast forward to January of 2026. We go through with this, we sign it. What would it feel like, or how would you think, how many total sworn would you think you'd have across the city of Vallejo, both counting VPD and the sheriff's office if we went through to this? Is it still 83 in your eyes? Is it more like 95 total? Like, give me a number so that we can understand what that number would look like across the city.
Yeah, so we would add, Councilmember, our totals with their, their proposed totals. I think their number was...
17?
Yeah, 17.
So we'd have about 100 officers total, total sworn? For a year?
Just for that, just for that period of time when they're working. It wouldn't be full-time, obviously, but yes, we could count them as a full-time police officer, so that FTE would transfer over.
Okay. So you're, you're essentially saying for 2026, you'd have total sworn 100, and if you had 100, you would substantially see a decrease, or I guess, faster response times across the city? And then talk about some of the benefits that that would afford you as a chief for your agency? Like, if this actually went through? I just want to make sure we have all the information before we make a decision.
Sure. And I'm just...
Yes.
I'm speculating, because we don't have that, but if, if we had eight officers patrolling our city right now, plus two supervisors, we would, we would be able to deal with critical events. Sometimes we will have a critical event that would require a callback, that we would have to call off-duty personnel to come in and help, augment our staffing. Or we would have to, let's say we had a large sideshow, or some event such as that, which we have quite frequently, we would have enough staff to man the areas that we know sideshow activity typically erupts. If we have somebody there to dissuade the sideshow from taking over that area, then they just go somewhere else. So you have to have manpower to alleviate that type of activity. The other thing is, when we talk about use of force, when we have enough officers at a critical event, statistically, more officers there or deputies, there's less use of force there. So in terms of, in terms of officer injuries or perpetrator injuries, I believe that would also decrease. And the fatigue value that, that we have in saving, I know it doesn't sound like 6,000 hours is a lot to save, but that's 6,000 less overtime hours that our officers have to work. And so that also is a benefit. So I also believe that when there is more visible patrolling, there is less crime. So if you see an officer somewhere, you're probably not going to spin that donut, or you're probably not going to do something like a crime in front of an officer. So just visible patrolling in and of itself, I believe will reduce crime.
Got it. And then the last question I have on the personnel side, before we get to cost, is, so the public commenter, Ms. Carr, talked about the security guard. So to, I just want to make sure I'm thinking about this, right, from your vantage point as the head of the agency. What you're thinking when it comes to our public safety is perhaps a layered approach, right? You've got the security guard, so you've got the current officers you have now, you'd have the security guards kind of on an interim basis helping out in some areas, and then that would sort of be a stopgap measure until you'd get the sheriff's office. And then, I'm assuming you probably wouldn't have the, the security guards after that? Can you walk us through how all these sort of pieces are working together, or what the interplay would be there, just so that we can also understand that piece of it?
Sure. I am a fan of the security guard program. If we can expand that program and put them in areas that we're experiencing either vandalism, break-ins, vehicle thefts, you know, catalytic converters or vehicle break-ins, I think security guards can be ideal for those situations, and I think they're affordable. So I like the security guard option. At some point, if we have enough officers or police assistance to replace those security guards, then we could phase them out. But if we don't, that's a very, I think, economical way to prevent crime. What I'm looking for the sheriff's deputies to help us with is really to help us make arrests and do traffic enforcement. Those are things that security guards cannot do. Traffic is a major concern in our city. There's a lot of reckless driving. We experience a lot of auto pedestrian fatalities. We have anywhere between 10 and 12 every year, and we have a lot of violent crime. So when a deputy or an officer makes a car stop and they find a weapon in that car, to me, that is decreasing. me, that is decreasing a shooting and potentially a homicide. If we have a homicide, that takes an enormous amount of resources that we're not even talking about on this overtime. We bring in a team, uh, if we can prevent a shooting or a homicide, those are cost savings. And so the more enforcement, whether it be traffic or just arresting thieves, because we know from experience, people that steal, steal a lot until they get caught. And so the more officers we have to arrest people that are committing these offenses, the less recidivism we're gonna see and the less call volume.
Okay. And then now on the cost side of the house, so we keep talking about 11 million, 11 million, 11 million. So, um, 1.2 of that, just to refresh the council's mind on this, um, 1.2 of that is for vehicles, which would be returned to us at the end of the contract, correct?
Correct. So vehicles last anywhere from a decade, if not a little bit longer. And so hypothetically, if we have that vehicle in their use for a year, we could get another nine or 10 years of use out of it from there.
Okay, so, um, that brings it theoretically down to 10 million, which means we wouldn't be spending on those cars, we wouldn't be ordering those cars from our, for our own fleet, right? Presumably for the, that future budget? Rica, is that, is that accurate?
Correct.
Okay. So 10 million, and then there's a million dollar reserve that, I mean, God willing, nothing happens, would be returned to us. Is that accurate or is that not accurate? City attorney?
It's not clear. I think we, that's part of the negotiation and getting the detail out of it. So it sounds like that is the intent, that if there is no expenditure of that money, that at the end of the contract period, we would receive it back. I believe that's the intent. But again, we've got these terms on this sheet, of course, as you're aware, but this piece, the money piece, is keeping us from getting into some of that detail to be able to, with 100% accuracy, answer your question. I believe that is the intent, yes.
And, um, and then the last point I'll just make for now, and I'm curious to hear my, um, colleagues' thoughts on this, is, um, I think part of the issue I'm struggling with, to be quite honest, obviously, um, you take the, you deduct the 1.2 million, we're at 10, presumably if that million came back, we're at 9. We're then looking at 40% reduction in overtime, so there's some savings, so that brings the cost down. I'm thinking we're really looking at maybe a five to six million dollar expense if all these things go our way. But the thing that I'm struggling with here is, we are essentially making a decision with missing information. Um, and that is our financial situation for next year. The number one thing I want to prioritize is the public's safety. Uh, and I've been saying that since January 7th. And one of the things that I think we've asked our city manager, and we're gonna be talking more with you guys about on Saturday, is like, we have a deficit, right? How do we cover that deficit? What, what is our plan? And so, you know, how do we make a decision on this without knowing what the reductions will be and how do we balance the budget? Um, and then similarly, um, you know, I don't see this as just using a reserve balance option, because your own presentation says we could use Measure P too. So I mean, that's the other thing. How much Measure P money do we actually have? I don't know. We've been approving things left and right. And so I'd want to get all of this information sort of packaged nicely and be able to, in a very simple chart, say, okay, we're down to, let's just play this whole scenario. We're down to 9 million, we saved the 40% on OT, now we're maybe about 5 or 6 million in, and then there's this much Measure P money left, and then this is the city manager and the finance director's plan to balance our budget, and then I can make a decision one way or the other. Otherwise, we're just kind of flying blind here. And so those are my thoughts. Um, hope that helps the rest of y'all.
If, if I might just add a little info, I think, um, something that needs to be considered in the timeline that wasn't, uh, included in the chart, but might be, and might be able to be done concurrently, is the, you know, Cal DOJ has a very strong interest in this relationship. Um, like they have other, um, kind of expansions of our traditional policing activities like the security guard. I don't want to speculate about how long DOJ's review and comments on a draft contract might be, but that might be, you know, another month or two of timeline to add to that. So, you know, that puts us maybe from the January to March timeline, maybe more squarely into March. Um, chief or, um, city attorney, you can comment on that. And councilmember Mathias, regarding the, um, overtime savings, I think if we're saving, you know, three to four and a half bodies, uh, in overtime, that might be a million dollars. So if I'm doing the, the quick math, I'd say, you know, 11.2 minus 1.2 for the vehicles, minus one for the reserve, minus one for overtime savings gets me to about 8 million dollars, um, as opposed to five to six. Still, you know, not 11.2, but, you know, still a substantial sum.
And, um, the one thing I need to add is, we were asked to look at from the liability budget on the city side, because those numbers are the sheriff's numbers, but we were asked to look at from the liability of the city side, what we thought that looked like from a cost perspective. And that's actually that, that the chief mentioned, that that was, um, the 500 and some odd thousand, I'd have to pull the staff report, and then potentially another 300. So that 11 million does not include that additional potential up to about, and it's just a thumb in the air, because we're guessing. That would bind out, associated with your, you know, average claims associated with activity of officers, ours versus someone else's, and, and putting that across the board, um, for what it would cost, that's how that number was derived. But it's another, it's about another 800,000.
And just a final thought, Director Nayar might have what we expect the remaining fund balance to be, um, at the end of the current, um, or the end of the upcoming fiscal year. So we know what has already been appropriated of the funds that we've already received, and we know what requests for next fiscal year are going before the Measure P oversight committee. So that might be a figure that she knows, uh, and city council can contemplate this evening.
All right. Uh, councilmember Palmaras.
Thank you, Chief, for your presentation. Uh, you know, I also echo councilmember Mathias' concerns about, um, our finances, but I'm not gonna belabor that point any further. Uh, the only comment I want to make is, I, I don't want to take for granted that we have been slowly but subtly, uh, increasing our numbers, our recruitment numbers into VPD. Last year, it was not like that. Uh, it would go up and down, it didn't seem like we were actually making any progress. So I really don't want to take that for granted right now. And first and foremost, it's about public safety. I think this will, uh, increase responsiveness, uh, and much needed responsiveness to the community. But in a very close second, I'm also keenly aware and concerned about the retention, excuse me, of our officers. And this also has, you know, if we approve this, this has the other effect of making sure our guys and gals, they, they, they actually take a breath. They've been going 1,000 miles per hour, uh, for the past, how long, you know, if they're new, or if they're laterals, you know, for the past year or so. And what I don't want to see is, even the best case scenario, we burn out our officers, and then they transfer over to another agency, and even in the worst case scenario, they stay here, they make a mistake, and it's just, it's just bad news for everyone. It's bad news for the community, it's bad, bad for, for the agencies, bad for the city of Vallejo. Uh, that's absolutely something I don't want to see happen. And so I, I am very cognizant about the financial concerns, but it is that second-place issue of maintaining our officers, uh, that really drives my decision that, you know, I will support this. Um, and I see this as a surge, it's a temporary, uh, Band-Aid, but I'm hoping that we get to a place where, with the right retention recruitment package, and that, that's forthcoming, that we will get more, uh, officers, and they will see that we are doing the right things, we have a culture of excellence and accountability, and in, that we work in a city that it, it's, it's not gonna be too difficult for them, uh, to serve. So that's, that's my hope. Thanks.
Thank you. I, um, I'll go, then we'll go to councilmember Lettigie, and then we've got some second round questions. Um, councilmember Palmaras kind of stole a few of the things I was gonna say. I, I completely agree with you. Um, I, I think I support this, I know it's a lot, I think we owe it to our community to do everything we can to make this happen, because we declared a state, as councilmember Gordon said, declared a state of emergency in 2023, and the urgency has not been there. Um, I'm, I'm appalled at how long this has taken. I know we had to, you know, get a bill through the, the legislature, and I know we had to do a lot of stuff, but good God, like, the second that bill passed, this should have been the number one priority for the city. The fact that that term sheet came in mid-December and sat there, and councilmember Lettigie, after we took office, on January 14th said, hey, can we have an update on the sheriff's contract? And we didn't have a meeting about it until early March, and here we are. I would love to have those two, three months back right now. We're talking about March 2026. I would love to have those three months back. So I, I don't want to just throw this out, because, oh, well, we've delayed so far, we might as well not do it. No, we gotta hit the gas. We owe it to our community. And I just, you know, the shot in the arm that this will provide, it'll give our officers a break, it'll allow us time to give them good training, implement the reforms in an accelerated manner, they won't hopefully burn out. Um, it gives us a breathing room to try and make sure we have a sustainable plan going forward for public safety. It will be a shot in the arm for our business community. We are trying to get economic development in certain parts of the city. If we say, hey, we're about to surge our staffing levels, and we're committed to this, that is gonna make a huge difference, it's gonna make our community feel more safe. There are so many benefits to this, I know it's gonna cost, but I did some back-of-the-napkin math, and I, it's, it's not perfect math, but man, I'm looking at the previous presentation that in July 2024, we had 34 patrol officers, uh, which is probably close to our low-ish. That fiscal year, 23, 24, $53 million was spent in the VPD budget. So we spent $53 million for 34 officers on patrol. The sheriff's contract would be 11.2 million dollars for somewhere between 12 and 14 deputies on patrol. It's not the same thing, because there's different overhead costs, and there's different ways that admin costs are calculated, but we've got liability calculated into this 11.2 million, we've got vehicles calculated into this 11.2 million, we've got admin from the county, which I, I still want to try to negotiate down a little bit, if we can get something itemized from them on the admin costs, it's something I talked to the sheriff about. This is actually, bang for our buck-wise, a pretty good deal compared to what we've been spending of our citizens' tax dollars and what they've been receiving in return. This is, it, it sounds like a lot of money, and it is a lot of money, but compared to what we've been spending and what we've been getting, this could make a really big difference. If we were to do this and then commit to doing the work to make sure we had a plan going forward, I think, I think it makes a big difference. I would like to fund it through. We might do security guards, if we can do security guards the second half of this year, to at least buffer until this starts, but if we have money set aside for security guards that we can put into this, I think this is more important. I want to fund it through Measure P. I think we should, not entirely, I think we should think about putting aside any remainder this year and running that through the Measure P committee. One of the goals of Measure P was public safety. I can't think of anything better than this. This is a one-time, one-year cost, could be funded through P and done. Overtime savings, we can fund it through that. I want to fund it through the salary savings and make the cuts elsewhere in the budget. So we've been balancing our budget with somewhere between 3 and 4 million dollars of police budget for the past two years. Let's balance the budget by cutting elsewhere and put that funding into the sheriff. Um, I don't want to pull from reserves. That is not our only option, uh, let's find another option, because I, I don't want to pull from reserves for the Mare Island Bridge, I don't want to pull from reserves for this, we've already gone bankrupt once, we're in a really good position with our reserves. I'm looking at RAC, I mean, we've done a good job building up the reserves, let's not blow that. I think we can do it, I know it's a leap, I agree with councilmember Mathias, we need a lot more information, and we're gonna have to work really hard, but we owe it to our community, and if we fall short at the end of the day, we can say that we tried, we can say that we did everything we could to make this happen, because our community deserves it, and we're in a state of emergency, and our, our taxpayers deserve police services. So that's where I stand on this, and I'll go to councilmember Lettigie.
Thank you. I'm gonna say this to the city manager, because it is imperative not to just have a staff report, but a staff report that gives numbers that a council can make a decision about what are the actual dollars available. And it is quite unreasonable not to have that information when we all know that we're making a decision about 11 million dollars, and where that 11 million dollars has to come from. And part of the staff work is a proposal to say, these dollars can come from here or here, option 1, 2, 3, or 4. And that shouldn't have to be a question on the dais about making such a very important decision that we have been talking about for quite a bit of time. Number two is, if, one thing that we have to remember when we say, what are we expecting of the county? What are we expecting of the state of California? I will tell you, the governor publicly spoke and sent a message to the city. And that is, we have budgeted positions within our budget, what did we do with those salary savings from the police budget? Because those positions were vacant. And that is a reasonable question to any organization, whether you're private or whether you're public. And that is the question that we have to ask ourselves as a city government, is, how are we doing our budget? And what do we do with our salary savings? Not only that, we had a state of emergency. How many dollars did we set aside and begin to plan for what we needed as it relates to being in a state of emergency? So there is a reasonable expectation from an organization, whether you're private or whether you're public, of how we utilize our dollars and how we account for them. And particularly, the responsibility of government is how we serve our public and how we use our tax dollars, they're my tax dollars as well. And this is about my safety, just as well as everyone else's that we are speaking of. And if we are not going to fund this bill, or this request, then we need to take off the table tonight that we are in a state of emergency, because we have been saying that too long. And we need to make a commitment so that we can have the appropriate dialogue with the county. Because it is fair that they don't have to continue to spend their resources to push us along where we're not willing to make a commitment for our own well-being. So I today, I do support this bill. It is fundamentally, or this request, it is fundamentally important for the safety of all residents, for our economic development, and for us to start moving forward as a city. Additionally, we spoke with the sheriffs, and, the sheriff, and he is not, his retired annuitant will stay at his shop, and he's pulling from his staff. And I believe we've wasted a lot of time in even talking with him. If we can get moving and doing the things that we need to do, he will push to move things forward. He has made that commitment, but we need to do our part. We have delayed and delayed and delayed. We need to determine, are we... and delayed. We need to determine, are we serious about this? And if we're not, then we need to say that we're not serious and let it go. But we do need to try. But again, if we're not serious, let's take everything off the table and stop saying we're in a state of an emergency, because if we don't move, we are no longer in a state of emergency. This is the way that we like it, and we've accepted it.
Thank you. That reminds me, one of the things I was going to mention is, just for transparency's sake, we met with the sheriff, after consulting with the city manager and the chief after the last meeting, I met with the sheriff twice and got the written responses from the sheriff's office. There are definitely elements that we can still discuss. He is very open to working with us on the logistics. He's very committed to this. I do agree with Councilmember Lettigie that he will expedite this. And I also spoke with the DOJ team and our evaluator. That is not a slam dunk, but that is a conversation that I am willing and able to participate in, in as much as we can expedite this. So thank you for reminding me to say that. All right, round two, Vice Mayor Bergenzer, and then Councilmember Matulik.
I just want to say, I do also support this 100%, and I don't even balk at the price. I think it's something that seems very reasonable for the level of service. But I agree with the mayor, and I agree with actual Councilmember Matias about, we need to sharpen our pencils and find other ways besides the reserves. I think that we could still commit to it tonight and commit to funding it, but as part of the budget workshop, that those pencils need to be sharpened because we need to find other ways and find other cuts that we need to do, or whatever we have to do. But I'm not comfortable spending all of our city's reserves on doing this. So it's, I was a bit shocked that there wasn't a proposed plan other than the reserves as part of this, other than the overtime savings. And so I think there needs to be more thought into that. I agree with Councilmember Lettigie that, you know, we don't come to this precipice and ask for $11 million with no plan of how we're going to do it except for our rainy day funds, which is just really inappropriate. So I think that I can support this, but again, I won't support it with reserves. Thank you.
City Manager Murray, did you want to jump in?
Yeah, I just want to clarify something. There isn't a proposal for a specific way of funding this that's incorporated into tonight's action. The proposal, then the resolution, is to reserve some funding, that assign some funding, and that's from the general fund, but to appropriate the funds through the budget process. So it wasn't our intent tonight, and we have a number of budget challenges to solve. And I know that Director Nayar is looking for budget options that would allow the city to close the existing baseline gap and find the funding to provide this. The proposal tonight is not to pay for it out of reserves. It's just to assign some money for it and to fund it through the next two years of budget. If the proposal were to pay for it through reserves, the resolution before you tonight would have been appropriate general fund reserves to pay for this. And that's not the proposal. It's just to say, we're going to fund this, and we're going to find the specific means to fund it through our budget development process.
And I get that, but I feel like it's also very reckless to request this amount of money and not have a plan. It's just that we want you to approve $11 million, but there's no plan for how we're going to have that money. And I thought that's what this discussion was, was to approve funding for a contract and have a plan for how we were going to fund it. And so that's where I feel like it's even more reckless after that comment. So I will just say again, I support this, but I will not support it with reserves. So we need to come up with the $8 million that we already in deficit, plus the additional 5.3 or whatever the number is for this fiscal year, and figure that out before we have the budget on Saturday, before that's approved.
Thanks. Councilmember Matulik.
Thank you. And I think we're all talking the same stuff, is we see public safety as the top priority of what we're looking for. And I think we're to the point of, as the term we've been talking about, is sharpen our pencils to figure this out. And so I guess there's a little bit of confusion, because when we asked the question, are we dipping into our reserves? I think we got a confirm of that. Yeah, we would be, with the understanding that this potentially the $11 million. So I have a couple of follow-up questions to that. And this came up to me, was can Measure P funds be used for salaries like this? Okay, I just want to put that out, because some people have been coming to us saying salaries are not part of the Measure P. So I just want to make that for the community to understand that, yes, this does fall under the ability for Measure P to be used for this. And to help quantify the conversation reserve, the fact we have such a reserve at $24 million, that gives us the benefit of certain bond and credit rating, correct? And so to help quantify what the impact of if we dip into the reserves, if we go, worst-case scenario, put the full $11 million on that reserve, what does that do to our bond and credit rating?
It's a tough one to answer, because there are so many factors that go into the credit rating. The fund balance is one of them, but there are others as well.
I guess maybe for the general public, if we use 50% of our reserve, what does that impact it? I think maybe is that easy, or is that a question that can be quantified almost to a point, with not so much?
Well, I think Director Nayar has made this comment before, which is, there's a very general standard in public finance of having two months' worth of operating expenditures in reserve, which is 16% of our, you know, general fund annual expenditures, which are about $135 million. If the $11 million were to be expended out of the reserves, we'd fall below that 16%. I think that would inevitably have an impact on our credit rating, although it's been, you know, we, there are a lot of other factors that go into that. But considering that we're thinking about borrowing, potentially for future, you know, bonding for future expenditures for roads, potentially related to the new police department headquarters, you know, it's an inopportune time to run the risk that your creditworthiness diminishes. So yeah, I think that's an important consideration for sure.
And thank you for pointing out, because I was going to bring that up, is we still have a police station that we need to figure out how to fund for that. And so with that, is there, I mean, for the general public to understand, is there a minimum, is there an amount, period, that would not impact, that if we do have to take out of the reserves, is there something that will not impact, significantly impact, where our bond and credit rating would be if we dip into it at all? I know it's difficult to kind of put that, quantify that.
Yeah, they review every two years. The last review was last year. And when they come back after two years, they ask us for all our financials for the last two years, and they look at the trend, how we are performing. So it's difficult to just have a ratio.
Okay, I was just trying to help quantify for the general public to understand, if we do dip into the reserves, the kind of impact that would, but we just know it's just going to be a negative impact, basically. So thank you for that.
16% of our, you know, general fund annual expenditures of about $135 million, that's about $22 million. So to meet that very broad Government Finance Officers Association standard of having 16% in reserves, we'd want to have about $22 million. And Director Nayar mentioned that we're anticipating that this fiscal year end will have about $25 million. So not much in excess of what's considered a reasonable standard.
Thank you for that.
All right, I have Councilmember Gordon, then Lettigie, then Matias. We're going to roof through the second round, and then I'm going to try to move us towards a motion. Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you. Can you please go back to the slide for me, Manny, where it was showing how this may be paid for? Yeah, you, back, you missed, yeah, one more. Okay. You went past it.
Physical impact.
Yeah, there you go. So I just wanted us to visually see that there is, as you mentioned earlier, there might be budget cuts, Measure P's, general fund. And so this is, to answer the questions I thought I heard before, this is our physical. I'd like to, it seems like my colleagues are, for support, I'd like for us to make a motion to vote for this.
We've got to go through.
County member.
Could you repeat? You wanted to make a motion?
Yes, I said I'd like to make a motion to vote for this.
I'm going to just get through. We have a couple more councilmembers that want to speak on the item. So I got Councilmember Lettigie. All right, Councilmember Matias.
So I just want to make one, one final comment on this, and this has to do with the county. So I obviously want to thank County Supervisor James for her leadership in helping shepherd this process, also for the support we've received from County Supervisor Williams, who's very supportive of the city of Vallejo. And I also want to say that, you know, this is, this action that we take tonight is an action we're taking to not only say in the affirmative that we're going to figure out how to make the math math, but that we're also committed to our city's public safety. What I would hope is that when this makes its way to the county, we are receiving support from all of our elected representatives that represent the city of Vallejo, and that we are, you know, in that process, also having a solutions mindset and orientation to ensure that we're able to get those sheriffs on the ground as soon as possible to provide support to Chief Tye and to our agency. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lettigie.
So I just wanted to be really clear. I too do not agree with using our reserves. And I do also want to say this about reserves. And yes, it might be true that standard and poor and all of the different rating agencies have a standard of every two years. But we also have to remember, depending on what's going on in the economy, you can have an unexpected rating come. It happens all the time, depending on what's going on. So it is important that we have our reserves. And when we talk about our reserves, I really would like to see where we truly have, we put our funds in reserves, that we are earning, figuring out the best way to maximize interest on these reserves, and that we're continuously building upon those reserves. And I do appreciate that we do have reserves. So that's really important. And I do want to make another comment, that again, I agree, as Councilmember Bergenzer stated, to our city manager, is remembering, again, that it is the responsibility of you and your team, when we are making financial decisions and other decisions, to provide, completed staff work provides options so that we can easily look at, where are we going to potentially allocate these funds from? It is $11 million for the type of budget situation that we're in, that is a significant amount of dollars, and there does need to be clarity, not just a list, the general fund, from here, from here, from here, but actually proposing, actually proposing a strategy of what are the potential dollars and how we might use those dollars. It's really important, and it helps us to do the work that needs to be done, and it helps you all to move forward so that we can ensure that we have services for our city. And so I'd like to remind you of that, and that is the expectation.
All right, thank you. So Councilmember Gordon alluded to a motion. With your permission, I'll have the vice mayor reread that motion, and then we will vote on it.
Okay, I move to adopt a resolution approving funding for a contract with the Solano County Sheriff's Office for public safety officers by providing direction to the city manager to include such funding up to 5.3 or whatever the number is supposed to be for the greater, or a greater amount as directed of each fiscal year 2025, 2026, and 2026, 2027 budgets.
So if I may, I'm sorry, you beat me to the reading of the motion. As Chief Tye mentioned, there's, the number is, should be $5.6 million. May I suggest some alternate language for the resolution, which is, adopt a resolution approving funding for a contract with the Solano County Sheriff's Office for public safety officers by providing direction to the city manager to assign $11.2 million of general fund balance for the services and include $5.6 million of funding for the services in each of fiscal year 2526 and fiscal year 2627 proposed budgets.
All right, let's do it, and let's vote.
My motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you. And Councilmember Paul Maras, I just saw you. You have your request on, it was an accident. Okay, it was an enthusiastic yes and request. Okay. That is going to bring us to our information calendar, which we have none, and then our city managers report.
Nothing to report this evening.
And then our city attorneys report. All right. She said no report, not on mic. But no, it's okay. That's going to bring us to our second community forum. Anyone wishing to address the council who did not as part of the first community forum is welcome to do so now. I believe we have one speaker in person, so let's go ahead and call them.
Yes, Mayor, we have Melvin Cowan.
And anyone wishing to speak online. We'll go ahead and start that timer. Please feel free to raise your hand online.
I'll try to be brief, so we don't, you know, bedtime is near. So, good evening, Mayor Sorsy, councilmembers, and city staff. My name is Melvin Cowan, and I'm the developer behind the Legacy Village at Maria's Place. It's a permanent supportive housing project to convert the Motel 6 on Enterprise Drive into 55 dignified, service-enriched homes for our unhoused neighbors in Vallejo, also with 24/7 service, as well as a live-in property manager. This isn't just another housing concept. It's a shovel-ready, deeply coordinated solution. Since September of last year, this project has been self-funded, and we've continued building momentum without direct city involvement. Our team includes Swinerton, 135 years of construction leadership, Piatac Architecture and Urban Design, 40 years of community-centered housing, Lucas and Associates, 20 years of affordable housing and civil engineering. Each has direct home key experience, and our partners bring credibility, capacity, and results. Caminar, which has 60 years in behavioral health, as well as substance use, treatment, support, and they are our partners for the project. We've secured site control, completed Phase 1 environmental review, and working with planning towards SEQA and NEPA categorical exemptions. We have also engaged Solano County's coordinated entry system, ensuring that the units go to those most in need, and that we remain aligned with the county's homelessness response strategy. We are applying for the Home Key Plus by May 31st, and we're grateful to have the leadership of Supervisor James, who also called this innovative, this innovative approach to solving homelessness. We also want to thank councilmembers like Councilmember Lettigie, who challenged us to think beyond permanent supportive housing. And because of that challenge, we've incorporated a future homeownership pathway and are expanding our workforce development model. We are also integrating a guaranteed basic income pilot that will be coordinated by the Solano Community Foundation, backed by philanthropy, and will be offering between $500 to $750 per month to participants, which will serve as a bridge to dignity, stability, as well as economic mobility. This is a sustainable, fiscally-layered project built for the long haul. We've aligned project-based vouchers, which are currently pending, Medi-Cal billing, reimbursements, as well as private and philanthropic capital. We've studied what went wrong with earlier Home Key efforts, and we've designed Legacy Village with safeguards and accountability. We've engaged the Corporation for Supportive Housing, a national supportive housing lender who is open to pre-development lending, but they need to see clear alignment with the city, a resolution of support, a letter of intent, or even a short-term funding bridge reimbursable through Home Key, or CSH will send a clear signal that Vallejo is ready to lead in this initiative. In addition to Home Key Plus, we're submitting a Supernova application next week, and we respectfully request the city, request a city letter of support to strengthen the submission. And so this is the opportunity to help bring real lasting solutions to Vallejo without needing to allocate city funds. We've done the work, and we're doing the work. We have a team, strong team, and we're moving forward, and we welcome you to move forward with us. I want to thank you for your time and your leadership and commitment to real solutions.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Yeah, please, please send us over that information.
Yep.
And with that, do we have any speakers online?
None at this time, Mayor.
All right. We will go ahead and move on to a report of presiding officer and members of the city council, and I'm seeing Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you so much. Thank you all for dealing with my questions and concerns prior to this. Thank you all for dealing with my questions and concerns prior to this setting. I wanted to give a report that I had a wonderful time with our Congressman Gary Mindy, and my colleagues for the U.S. Shipbuilding, the Mare Dock, Mare Dry Dock, excuse me. It was such wonderful, because the, most of us, we got a chance to stay afterwards, and I, we heard a lot of excitement that we're bringing some business to Mare Island, but not only Mare Island, but also to the city of Vallejo. I also had a great opportunity to participate in the community event for this spring into Wellness Health Fair. I wish you all could have seen all that I've seen. It was from mental health, to health, to dental, dancing, of course, and the police, our Vallejo PD was there, iHeart was there, and a lot of children was so blessed by it, and so was parents, including myself. Of course, Christopher got the award for the best dancer. I also would like to ask from our city attorney, how can I make the ask for ongoing funds for the youth late-night basketball?
I think you probably have two options. One is through your ask to participate in the two-step process to look for the council to make a funding allocation to that program. But you do have your Budget Workshop Number Two coming up on Saturday, which may be, I'm not wrong about that, right? I'm right. Which may be another opportunity, since that will be a time when you are already talking about budget and some budget allocations and details, that you could bring it forward at that time.
Okay. Thank you for that. And my last one is, as you all know, that we, I am participating, I'm partnering with Bishop Harris, doing a safe South Vallejo cleanup. And so I would like to ask my colleagues to please consider coming, that's going to be on the 26th, and it's from 9:00 to 12:00. So if you could come, that would be great. And my last thing, and this is to the city attorney, it was brought, I mean, sorry, city manager, it was brought to my attention that there's nowhere on our website of any of us, when we got elected, there's no photo of us at all on our website. We took tons of pictures, even with our senator, but on our website, there's no photo. And I could be wrong, but this is brought to my attention, I didn't get a chance to look myself personally.
I think there are pictures on the website for each of you.
Yeah, could you, I mean, could you help me, because I just didn't see it.
Sure.
Not, not the official one, I'm talking about the social, social one. Just, I mean, it's petty, but it was brought to my attention that it wasn't there on social media.
Okay, why don't we talk offline about what you have in mind?
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Councilmember Matulak.
Thank you, Mayor. And obviously, due to the, where we're at, it's time-wise, I was going to, I'll give a more detailed report when we do have time, and hopefully at a future meeting. But one of the things I did want to bring up was, while I was remotely, I mentioned the Sports Hall of Fame, and acknowledged a couple of personal colleagues of mine. I want to be able to acknowledge all the inductees of the Sports Hall of Fame at a future, at a future acknowledgement. But to continue with my highlighting or touting a local business, I want to bring out, or give a shout-out to Hopulent. They're located on Tennessee, they're a couple of doors down from, excuse me, Napples, and they're, and they're run by Kat and her brother David, as a, and, as a Chicagoan, they're from the Midwest. So I just want to tell that also, but they're a great place to, for a TGIF-type of plaza, and they have some good food and some good drinks over there. So I recommend and encourage people to go visit Hopulent and say hi to Kat and David for us.
Thanks. Councilmember Matias.
Couple quick things. Thank you, Mayor. So number one, we were invited by Commissioner Hernandez from the Economic Development Commission to a play on March 30th at The Hill, which was, which is in District 1, where we got to see students cross many of our Vallejo high schools, participate in just an outstanding play. And so want to commend them, not just for the amount of work that they put into what was just an amazing production, but also the desire to want to fundraise for what is a summer camp for them, and what is a summer camp that will help them in their future endeavors. And so I want to thank that community for putting that together and for extending an invitation to us. Number two, I'm just going to put this on the council's radar, this coming Saturday, we've got, obviously, our Budget Workshop, but Vallejo Together, the county, and a whole host of our organizations are having Dignity Day from between 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. And so if there's some opportunity for us to perhaps attend and see what are some of the services that are being provided to the members of the unhoused community, I think it would be Saturday.
This Saturday?
Yeah, this Saturday. So if there's some opportunity for us to have an extended lunch, where we could go over and at least get a flavor for what services are being provided, and the organizations that are putting that together, I think that would be a very helpful experience for us all, as we craft a comprehensive solution. And then on that point, I just want to extend my gratitude to the city staff, because I know since we had that meeting last Tuesday, they've been working hard to continue to move that work forward. And my hope that it is that through this process, we can, you know, address what has been an ongoing challenge in our community. So my gratitude to the staff to that, and to the other councilmembers who have been moving that work forward since our meeting on Tuesday. Thank you.
Thanks. Councilmember Lettigou.
Thank you for this. I want to bring to the attention of our city manager, on April 1st, Tuesday, April 1st, we had a meeting on the unhoused. And Action Item 4 Point A, which was the staff resolution. In that staff resolution, it states councilmembers were offered the opportunity, after the council meeting, to share their thoughts on the next steps regarding the homeless deliberations, additional staff analysis, potential new or revised policies or programs, et cetera, with staff, so that staff could compile and present those thoughts at the April 1st, 2024 special council meeting. Staff did not receive any such items. I want to make two points. When I came on this dais, I made a commitment to be a team member, to you, to our city attorney, and the staff that you support. I have been in government service for many years, and I too have a staff, and I too have a commission, I stand before boards. And never in the history of my career have I ever had a staff report that called out a body. I don't appreciate it, it's disrespectful, and we can all agree to disagree at any point in time, and we're not always going to agree, but I do believe that we should give professional respect. The second point that I'm going to make is, this is not true. I have an email where I sent at least nine questions, that in fact, some of those questions were answered by the staff. And so I would assert to you, as the city manager, and as I've spoken to you in the past, is what is going to be the tone of our organization? Because you set the tone at the top. And I would hope that it is professionalism and respect. And that's what we all strive for. We're not all perfect, sometimes we have bumps in the road, but this is very disrespectful. And as a matter of fact, I hadn't even noticed it until I was called out in public about it. And the impression that it made on the general public, as well as the fact that it was on social media. So if we are going to be a team, this is uncalled-for, it's unacceptable. And I would expect that the tone at the top is being driven by you, and we're supporting that, and we're trying to really be a team and work through things, because we want to be successful. And it is going to take all of us to be successful. And I will never be called out, ever again, by staff in such a manner. I will not tolerate it, I will not accept it, because I will not do that to staff. And we have had fumbles and bumbles, and I have been gracious in that, saying, we will make mistakes, I just want to, what have we learned in this? I want the same courtesy. I'm not asking for it, I'm demanding it, because we all deserve professional respect. So thank you.
Thank you for raising that. I appreciate it. I'm going to close this out quickly. I have a couple of short updates, just for making sure I'm keeping everybody on the same page. So I've been going to neighborhood meetings periodically. I went to one with Councilmember Gordon in South Vallejo, our Glen Cove one, the Vista's last week, I'm going to be in Vallejo Heights. So working through and looping folks in, and hoping we can kind of set some, some good procedures, maybe even start having some town halls in the summer, get to the districts that we haven't hit yet. I'm also going to be with the help of Patricia Hunter. We just pulled this off. We have scheduled town, not town halls, but meetings at each of the high schools. So when I was campaigning, and I know my other new colleagues did this with Bethel, we had a forum, I'm losing my mind, it's 11:42, I'm trying to be expeditious. We had a forum at Vallejo High School, of which I promised the students that there would be follow-up. Many of them were seniors, I wanted to follow up with them before the end of the school year. So we have scheduled Vallejo High next Monday, Bethel the following Monday, and John Finney the following Monday. The biggest sadness in my heart is the Brown Act, that I was not able to bring everyone in on that, but I'm going to request that the information be sent, and I don't know, I mean, this is, to me, the start of something, so I want to just say that we're trying to pull this off, and then we'll figure out the best way to all do it together without violating the Brown Act. But wanted to keep everybody in the loop, and we'll have either Dawn or Eric send the dates. That was the plan from the beginning, is once we get the dates, we'll send it to council, and I don't know, and then we'll figure out how to not violate the Brown Act in doing it. But I'm excited for that, and I know especially my three colleagues, you all were at that forum at Bethel. So you might want to go back to Bethel, or you might want to go to Vallejo High, but we'll send that information for you, and it will certainly not be the last. We have an agenda-setting meeting this Friday for April 22nd. We're looking at the Ad Hoc Subcommittee for Police Reform, finally. We're going to be looking at probably the whistleblower policy. I'm going to make the executive decision, as I hinted at at the last meeting, that the previous council had requested that the ad hoc committees be created to review the municipal code and a potential charter review, and they had put that timeline on April. And I, with the consult, short consultation of the Vice Mayor, said, hey, maybe we don't try to cram that all into April, maybe we push that to May, and it seems like that's probably going to make sense, because we need to get the Police Reform Subcommittee done first. We're also going to have the Disaster Preparedness Presentation, if not at the next meeting, the one after. So we're working, yeah, we're working through the requested items. Those meetings have been really helpful, with the city clerk, city manager, Vice Mayor, and myself. I'm going to ask for an update on the goal, status of the timing of goal-setting, I don't want to take us too late. And same with the state of the city, we're going to try to get that scheduled and get that out. We're looking at June 6th, I don't know where we're at with that, but I'll get that update. And the very last thing, and I have to give this update tonight, even if it's to an empty room and everybody being weary, there has been a lot of news lately about shipbuilding. And we had a wonderful press conference with Congressman on Mare Island, where many of us were present, all of us that were able to be there, I think we're there. And the Congressman is pushing through the Ships for America Act, which is going to reinvest in the American maritime industry and U.S. shipbuilding. Congressman is laser-focused on bringing funds to Mare Island. He is in very serious discussions about being, bringing funds to Mare Island. I am discussing with him, bringing funds to Mare Island, and I am working with the regional partners, many of whom I serve on commissions with, so our other mayors and our supervisors, to make sure we're all on the same page about what bringing funding to Solano County would look like. There has also been the news recently of a shipbuilding work group that involves California Forever, and the mayors of the cities that are looking to annex California Forever, of which I am also trying to determine next steps, and ensure that we are on the same page. That is in process. So I'm just saying to let everybody know that that is something that I'm working on, I'm in very close communication with our Congressman, we're on the same page, he's really supportive of us, and it's my highest priority right now to make sure we're all on the same page as a county, because we need resources, and this is a really exciting opportunity for us. So that's my statement on that for now, and I'll be happy to provide an update as soon as I can. With that, I believe we are ready to adjourn at 11:45 p.m. Thank you all.